October 24th, Bristol, Virginia City Council meeting. First order of business, just to say a couple of things about the neighborhood meetings. We've had two additional meetings, one at Virginia High, one at City Hall. I wasn't able to attend the City Hall meeting, but I'll tell you, the Virginia High meeting went well. Crowds are getting bigger, the input was good. There's a lot of concerns in the community. There's concerns about, obviously, the debt service discussions we've had and what the impact might be on taxation. So, just so everybody knows, I mean, we've come to no decisions. We've got some more reviewing to do, but we are looking at the numbers a lot harder. City manager's putting together a gap closure plan of how we could close the gap on two of the scenarios, and if it's possible. So, when we get those numbers finalized, we'll share those numbers. So, we're trying to figure out a way not to kick the can down the road. I think everybody should appreciate that, but it's not going to be easy. So, we're having to really scrub the numbers pretty hard to figure out how we actually do this. So, with that said, see if there's any other council comments. Okay. Well, let's do a moment of silence, then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. And please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
One other item on the agenda, it was brought to our attention late this afternoon, that the capital project listed under the consent agenda for the appropriation of additional VDOT funding needs to be moved as number six on the regular agenda. So, there's a resolution, it's got to be voted on, approved by City Council for that VDOT project, so I'd need a motion to make that adjustment to the agenda.
Motion to adjust the agenda to include the VDOT project issue.
Second.
All right, got a motion in a second to make that adjustment on the agenda.
Where are you going to put it?
Number, it'll turn into number six. So, please call the roll.
Flainer?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mpower?
Yes.
All right, next item, council discussion items. First one we have is procurement policy discussion. We've pushed this and tabled this a couple of times due to late meetings, so City Manager, you want to lead the discussion?
Yes, council, I think I put this on the agenda previously, and we just didn't get to it, but what we have is the procurement policy within the city, and basically requires that we follow the Virginia Procurement Act. But it also lists out several smaller items that probably can be done away with, so that it makes it easier. And what we're asking you all to discuss is how you would like, of course, to move forward with the procurement policy. What we would request is that the city adopt limits that are set forth in the Virginia Procurement Policy, that's set at $100,000 for goods and services, and $60,000 for professional services. Currently, we're set at $50,000 for goods and services, and $60,000 for professional services. If we follow the Virginia Procurement Policy, it's not going to change how we operate or what we show you all, it just allows us the ability to follow that policy more closely without having an extra hoop to jump through here and there.
Mr. Reed, we have put bids out for forensic accounting services on the Falls Project and so forth, and we've put out bids for legal services. I anticipate that's going to be more than $60,000, and I don't care how much it costs, quite frankly. I think we'll get that money back from the people that perhaps did whatever they did. So, does this in any way affect your ability, sir, to make that call without council approving it, or is that something that's going to have to come back for council?
Well, it's going to have to come back for council approval, mainly because this was not a budgeted item for the accounting or legal audits, so it'll have to come back before council for approval at some point. The week of October 30th, we'll be having interviews. We've, it begins on October 30th, we have two interviews that day, one on October 31st, two on Wednesday, two on Thursday, and that will conclude our interviews, then we can begin the competitive negotiation process.
Fair enough, okay. And you anticipate that by the, before the end of the year, whoever is selected will be able to get in to the auditing and so forth, both on the legal side as well as the accounting side?
I would hope that we would be able to have our selections made and start the competitive negotiation process the following week, the week of November 6th, and we'll just have to go through that process to see how long it takes.
It needs to be expedited. We've waited a year plus for this, and it needs to be expedited as much as possible. Bring the numbers to this council. We owe up and down on whether or not to approve this and so forth, and that way we can put some citizens' issues, we can either alleviate them, that there was no issues with the...
Alls.
Yeah, well, whatever.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate name, by the way, but still, we can alleviate a lot of people's fears and so forth, one way or the other.
Okay. But, to get back to the procurement policy, one thing that you all might be interested in, our current amount for a purchase order is $500 or more. We have approximately 1,100 of those transactions a year. The state procurement policy states that purchase orders required for anything over And then, the current amount for purchases under $3,500 do not require quotes. Our policy states $2,500, there's about 200 transactions a year for that. Purchase above $3,500 but less than $25,000 require two written quotes. Our policy says $2,500 to $15,000, that's 200 transactions a year. Purchases above $25,000 but less than $75,000 require three written quotes. Our range is $15,000 to $50,000, that's 39 transactions a year. Purchases above 50 but less than 100 require four written quotes, and competitive sealed bids or proposals are required for amounts expected to exceed $100,000. There's probably a dozen or so of those transactions. And then, professional services up to $60,000 require a minimum of three quotes. Ours is currently at $50,000, and I think last year we had one of those transactions. Thank you. So, just wanted to give you a little bit of background on the number of transactions for those types of purchases, and is, if our charter just reflects that we follow the Virginia Procurement Policy, then we're going to be in line with what the state legislature sets?
When was the last time we updated those numbers?
Let me look. May have been 2005, you got the ordinance? Yes, 2005, October 11th, 2005.
How often does the, my understanding is what you would recommend would be to just adopt whatever the state does, and not put it in as a number, but just say whatever. How often does the state update their numbers?
That's up to the legislature. I mean, you know, I think it's, they look at it quite often, but I think probably the last time, can you give me just a second, I can get it pulled up.
We really, do we really need to do that, Mr. Reed? I mean, realistically, what you're asking us to do is adopt what the state legislature does in the procurement policy, the state legislature asks us to do, is that what you're asking, sir? I mean, there's no use going back and through when they updated and so forth and so on. I don't see that. I mean, you've told us, laid it out there. I mean, the bottom line is, do we need to have historical data, or can we just vote up or down on that?
I'm just trying to answer Mr. Hartley's question.
Well, that's not something really that's, you know, important that I see for a decision on whether or not we follow the state requirements or not, Mr. Reed.
Well, this is just a discussion tonight to determine if you all want to leave things as they are. I'm not asking for a vote, not, because at some point I'm going to have to present a charter change to you all, plus an ordinance to go along with that charter change, and we would do that sometime in November or early December. This is just more for discussion, to kind of get your all's fill, if it's something I need to start working on, or if it's something that I just need to drive.
Well, can't you just get the information and pass it on? If we're not going to vote on it up or down tonight, the historical data, you can provide it to all council members rather than waiting and looking it up tonight and so forth, and answering that question, wasting everybody's time?
Mr. Flainer, this is a discussion tonight. I mean, I'm not trying to waste anybody's time, I think this is...
I'm answering, I'm saying the question is, to ask you to look up on the computer, historical data.
I can provide that. That's what I always do, anytime there's a question.
Okay, and you don't have to do that right now?
I don't, but I was, you know, trying to answer Mr. Hartley's question.
Well, if you decide to do that, or if council decides, just don't use a number, like Bill said, just say follow the state procedure.
That's all we want to do, we just want to follow the state procurement policy.
That way, we don't have to change.
We don't have to change it, every time it changes, we don't have to come back and change it.
Wow, that's rocket science.
Have you experienced any reason why, has our method hindered the city from doing business? Well, what we have, I wouldn't say it hinders us doing business, but what it does, it's just an extra layer at this point that our purchasing department has to deal with, because he's looking at two different laws, he's looking at the state law, plus he's looking at the city code in regards to what he has to do for specific purchases, and it would just make things streamlined, that way he only has to recognize one set of numbers for certain types of quotes, and he doesn't have to go back and make sure that we're above a certain $2,500 or below a $3,500. It just streamlines it for our purchasing. It's not going to change who signs off on what's purchased, or anything like that that we've put in place before, you know, we've still got those policy limits in place, so that they would still have to...
They still have to stay within their budget regardless.
Still have to stay within the budget.
Got the protection.
Still got to stay within the budget, I'm going to have to sign off on it, if it's anything up to $15,000, Mr. Bradlin will have to sign off on it for anything over 10, and the department head for anything over 5, so we've still got those things in place.
Okay, that's good.
The only thing I'll add, going forward, and BBU got in a lot of trouble over this, a lot of organizations, you got to follow the law, it's given, right? So, the CFO needs to look at the law and make sure there's not any additional things that need to be in the policy, to make sure the internal controls are in place, so that you have two people that approves POs, you don't have one person that approves a PO without a quote, you don't have a Good Boy Network going on where, you know, his brother gets the contract for the mowing services and all that kind of stuff, so just make sure that sometimes state law's written, you know, at a high level in a general way, that there's enough detailed internal control that you know department heads have to approve, and there's another person have to prove, and it's within your guidelines as a chief financial officer, because at the end of the day, you're going to be responsible, make sure that things are done clean and right, you know, from a financial standpoint. Any other discussion on procurement? All right, next item, debt limit?
Yes, I know this has been discussed, we've attempted to discuss this in the past, and the question that has always arisen, what is the appropriate amount of debt that a city should carry? And back in 2016, there was an analysis done by Davenport and Company with localities similar to us in size, and they looked at the debt that they had, and they compared it to their total assessable, taxable assess values. And what the industry standard is, is that 3% to 4% of your debt should be based on your taxable assets. So, if you take what our taxable assets are right now, $1.13 billion, at 4%, our debt load should not exceed roughly $45 million. And...
Now you tell.
Better late than never. That's industry standard, and as council's well aware, we're over twice that amount at this point. And this kind of goes, this goes into our discussion in regards to, one, how do we restructure debt, the type of debt limit policies we set in the future, and how do we do that? And when would we be back at a healthy range? And based upon the numbers that have been provided to us by Davenport on the options 1, 2, 3, and 4, we're not looking to get down to that $45 million to $50 million range until really 2031 to 2035, depending on what option the city chooses.
Is this something we can change in our charter?
It is, but I would caution you, I think we would be wise to wait to determine what option we choose first, because we don't want to set a charter change that we will immediately be in violation of.
Anyway, realistically, a charter change isn't going to affect, affect any way...
I mean, in reality...
We're over it now.
In reality, you know, our borrowing is maxed out, and a charter change, like Mr. Wingard and others have discussed, I think it's wise, we need to start setting parameters and looking towards the future, but at the same time, we've got to make sure that we don't set parameters that tie the city to the point of being able, not being able to operate in the future as well. So, we've got to be very careful how we choose and what we choose in regards to those types of debt limits. Because I know we have discussed referendums where citizens get involved and vote, I know Mr. Hartley has discussed that with me, and if we have referendums based on certain dollar amounts, when we're borrowing above a certain percentage of our assessed properties, you know, maybe there needs to be a referendum involved up to a certain point, maybe it needs to be a council vote, maybe it's a unanimous council vote, or a four to one vote, something, I mean, there's so many different options to look at as to how we want to handle this debt, but at the same time, we have to make sure we don't implement something that we're already, that we're immediately in violation of.
Well, I'll give you a couple of thoughts. I mean, one I shared with you, looking at Tennessee, I mean, and they're, to see if you could do something similar, but they have a structure, anytime you borrow, there's a, I think it's 30 days, if 10% of the people that voted in the last election filed a petition, then that would go to a referendum regardless, anytime they borrow. So, there's a window after you vote on it till it can take effect, and that gives people a chance. I like something like that, it gives the public, if they don't want you to do it. The other thing I'd suggest, given what you just said, is maybe not in terms of a limit where we're at, but it seems the times that have gotten us in great trouble borrowing, was borrowing large sums at one time, you know, 10, 20, $5 million, I think, at one time, because you're going to have some borrowing that's going to be for, if you needed, like fire equipment or something like that, that's part of your natural business, but you're not going to go out and borrow tens of millions of dollars at one time, so I think if you put some kind of limit on that, it would, when you got, right now, it wouldn't matter, it'd be moved, we wouldn't be in that position in violation of our charter, because we couldn't do it, but once you could, it would keep you from getting back into a strenuous position really quick.
I'm glad you finally, after three years almost on council, decided to do a referendum and let the people decide it. We had a $6 million up and down, that, I didn't hear anything about a referendum, which basically put us to our debt limit max, but...
Talking about bigger money than that.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir.
$6 million ain't big money.
Compared to the city's debt, no, it is a big money.
All right.
It's big money to me as an individual, yes, but we're talking about the city here, not about individuals.
Well, y'all been on here for two years, and I mean, now it's clear to have a referendum. I just wish that we had a referendum five, six years ago, let the people decide, but it didn't happen then, and I mean, it's just kind of late in the game to be talking about referendums and so forth and so on going forward.
We're talking about...
We can't borrow another penny, we can't borrow another penny, Mr. Hubbard.
I didn't say we could.
Okay.
We're talking about the future.
Why talk about a referendum? 30, you said 2031, depends on whatever, right?
Depending on the option.
Okay. And the best case scenario is 2028, I think, if we have the pain now.
But that's for 4%. It depends on what standard you want to follow, you know, if it's 3%, it's going to go out further for us. If it's 4%, we'll get to the 4% range sooner rather than the 3%.
Well, we can do, we can just, we can put all this stuff in there, it sounds really good for the media and so forth and so on, but the realities are, this isn't going to be implemented in, at a minimum 11 years and so forth and so on, but it does sound like a good soundbite, we'll do a referendum, next time we're going to borrow a lot of money, but the realities are, that's a long way out in the future, a long way out.
But at the same time, we still need to be talking about putting mechanisms in place that doesn't allow this to ever happen again.
That's right.
I think the best mechanisms, people in Bristol, Virginia will never let it happen again, if we ever get out of this in Charlotte. That's the best thing.
Probably not, yeah.
Stupidities only happens once in a lifetime, and...
Well, it seems like we tend to do it over and over and over again somehow.
We've been notorious for it.
So, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in the field, we don't do nothing, because what got us here is we didn't have the controls in place. So, if you want to run an organization right for the next 20 to 40 years, you put some kind of controls in place that reigns the stupidity that people talk about in, whether you do that with a referendum, or whether you do that with debt limits, you need to do it. We're irresponsible by sitting here and saying it's okay, because we now have a chance to change that for the future.
Well, we can change it, but then the councils will come on in the future, will come back, and they'll change the charter and say, we're going to do this, this, and this.
No, if we put it in the charter that it's a referendum for them to change it...
Okay, okay, okay. If it's a referendum for them to change it, or whatever you put in a charter, guess what? They can vote it out, Mr. Wingard.
We could propose that they go into state law.
Well, that might work, put the teeth behind the state legislature, but otherwise...
You put five fools on here again...
We put teeth in the BBU issue, went to the state, right, and they did several things to make sure that didn't happen again, so if you want Bristol, Virginia not to get in a position, and the state should say, I don't want a city to get in a position where I may have to bail them out.
But you can vote it out, and you can change that, that's my point, is, you know, we can do everything, and it sounds great, but the realities are, you get five other people up here that want their kids to have a job, or they want to take care of somebody else, they can change the charter, just like we're up here talking about charter amendments. So, realistically, yeah, it sounds great. Mr. McGee can write his story, Bristol wants to change the charter, but the reality is, 10 years, when we get out of this financial mess, if we get out of this financial mess, another five group here, if Bristol's still a city, and so forth and so on, and five fools can get on here and do the exact same thing that fools have done to this city for 30 years, period, period. So, we can talk and we can do it, that's fine, I'll vote it, but that doesn't mean that five people that come down the road later can't change it, is what I'm saying.
So, you're suggesting we do nothing?
I'm saying, we don't have any, we don't have any mechanism to do anything right now, it's set in stone, we can't borrow any more money.
But that's why we're talking about it.
Well, okay, and that's what I'm saying.
We do have the mechanism to do something, we just got to agree on what we're going to do and the approach we're going to take.
Okay, and then, bottom line is, like I said, when we get out of this debt, or get down to $45 million, the industrial standard that Mr. Reed spoke about, bottom line is, you know, if some of us are even alive then, I mean, really, I mean, no offense, Mr. Hubbard, I mean, me too, you know, health-wise, I mean, realistically, it is what it is, but if we're still living, then five other people, I mean, realistically, folks, Bristol's been led down the sewer, the rat hole, by idiots. I mean, you can't get any better than what we've had as far as being stupid.
The advantage, the advantage... You can change it, but the advantage would be that the council would have to bring it up and make it public that they need to change the charter, and then somebody gets a chance to say, why are you doing that, instead of finding out they're going to approve a bond referendum the night of a meeting that you come to, see what I'm saying?
I get what you're saying, but the bottom line is, you don't disagree with me that the bottom, that we can't control what five people do.
Anything we do now is useless.
It's useless, it's useless.
But, for now, but for the future, it's got a value, that the future council will have to make it public that they want to change the charter, and then the public gets the chance to say, why?
Well, here's the problem, how many people, how many people realistically show up to these meetings?
Well, we can't...
I mean, unless there's a major issue, you say there's going to be a charter change on the ballot, you may have 10 people show up, okay? Let's just be real. And how many people showed up when they did the Falls disaster, Mr. Hubbard? Nobody. Maybe a few, Ms. Marnie? Yeah, Mr., Mr., whatever, I'm sorry, Michael Pollard, thank you, yes. I mean, they showed up.
Yeah.
I didn't show up, you didn't show up, but I know what.
We can't fix it fast.
We can't fix it fast.
We can't, we'll follow that logic, you would say we shouldn't have a charter at all.
I agree.
No rules at all, just...
Play it as you go.
Play as you go.
Okay, next item.
Yeah.
I think we need a debt limit, put together something, make a recommendation, we'll vote it up or down.
Absolutely. Okay, next item on the agenda is Candy Alley. Candy Alley is a little street over that intersects with Texas Avenue, and in June, the Transportation Safety Committee recommended that Candy Alley be closed, and since that time, we've been in discussions with our, with the individuals who live out there, and there has been some concern about closing Candy Alley. Gene, if you can just take that down, pull the little Google man over there to the corner of Candy and Texas Avenue, right in there, let's see, I think we're off some, right, yeah, keep going up, yeah, right there, turn it over to your left, there you go, keep going. So, right here is Candy Alley, and the resident who lives in home on the right, you can see there's been a chain link fence that has been in place there, plus you'll see some white posts, those white posts have been our PVC pipe that have been embedded in concrete. Over the past several years, the resident there has suffered from individuals running into the fence, running into her yard, throwing beer bottles through her windows, that's why she had to put up the chain link fence. And then, if you can go on down Candy Alley to the end of the house there, Mr. Christian, right there behind the little shrubbery, there is a gas meter, and the previous incident brought this to everyone's attention, a car was coming up Candy Alley and ran into the fence, could have potentially hit the gas meter. So, Transportation Committee met, they decided that it might be best to close that alley, there are several other routes of egress for folks through there. However, based on conversations I've had with residents, it appears that the residents are, they don't want to close Candy Alley. And however, I have talked to what I would consider maybe the leader of the group, Mr. Johnson, who's here tonight, I don't think there will be too much, too much of an issue if it's considered a one-way coming out to Texas Avenue, unless I'm wrong, I think, I think the residents in that area would be okay with a one-way street. But what we need to look at, Wallace has been out there, Michael Main has been out there, and so has Jay Dietrich, Jay could not be here tonight, he had a family obligation, but we can put in a guard rail there for the resident, that's going to run this roughly $5,000. That would prevent vehicles from going into the home, it's not going to solve the beer bottles being thrown and things of that nature, and we could also put up this concrete bollards, which are concrete posts that go into the ground, you know, maybe run those four to five feet apart, all the way down the side of her house, but two or three right near the gas meter, so there's several options. I wanted to bring this to your all's attention, because I'm anticipating bringing this back to council on November the 14th for a vote as to whether or not we make it a one-way street, whether we close it, or whether we leave things as they are.
Which way, you're talking, one way in?
One way coming out.
Coming out.
Towards Texas.
I got a call, probably the same one that you've talked to, but this is the only level street they have to get to their homes, the other streets are uphill.
Right.
So, that would be in the snow, now, the rest of the time, there's no issue, but obviously, we still have snow.
Right.
Would the gas company not be responsible for protecting the, what you're talking about, Mr. Reed? Why would the city be responsible for that?
Well, I don't, it's not just the gas company, we've got the home, I mean, you can see from the photo there that the home is right on the edge of the road. Years ago, this used to be a little store, and maybe it's People Inc. purchased it and converted it to a home, I can't remember how many years ago, but it's been quite a while, so at one point, this road probably wasn't nearly as traveled as much as it is now, there's an increase in traffic, unfortunately, there's probably an increase in drivers under influence, and I think that's been a lot of the, a lot of the issues, of people hitting the fence and throwing beer bottles and things of that nature, so...
Have you inquired of the gas company, Mr. Reed? I mean, my question is, if the gas company has a meter or something there, then obviously they're drawing business from that, and why would the city be responsible for a private company's gas line?
Even if it's not the gas company, we've still got an issue with the cars going into the front yard, hitting that fence, potentially going into our home. We, the city has put up guardrails there on King Mill Pike, right up from where you live, if you take a left coming out where you live, the city's put up guardrails there to protect those residents, so, you know, guardrails would be feasible... So, you know, guardrails would be a feasible solution for this particular spot.
I, I was gonna say, I mean, I know where that's at, that's right around the corner, I rode my bike through there, I walked through there, I walked the kids through there to go up to the school. Uh, I remember when that was the store before it was the house, and, uh, you know, I've had a lot of calls because those people live near me. And, uh, when they explain, you know, the need to keep that open, I'm in total agreement, because that is the only level way in and out of that neighborhood. And all the other ways, even if they're not level, don't provide very good sightlines to get in and out as well. And, you know, to me, that's an issue, and I, the, you mentioned the ball, ballards or ballast or whatever, those concrete posts. I noticed those just the other day, walking over there to see actually where the gas meter was. Because a lot of those streets in that part of town are about that wide, they're very narrow. And, and I can show you on down there on Luttrell Street, near Madison, on Madison, there's some that they put, I guess the city put them up years ago because these fences have been hit. I mean, if my house was sitting that close, less than two months ago, I had a car that had a wreck in front of the house, it would have hit my house if my house was that close to the road. I mean, to me, that's partly why we need good zoning, is not to have a structure that close to the street, because, uh, you know, I feel for them, but yet, to close a street for the benefit of one person.
You can't do that.
I just don't see that, and I, you know, I think, um, you know, again, the, the posts there, those white posts, they're white, they're PVC, there's nothing to stop them. I think if you put the ballast there, it might protect the house, but it won't even protect the gas meter. You need to put a post back about where that trash can is to stop something that, from coming that way to hit, hit the gas meter. So, uh, I definitely am not in favor of, of, of closing that. Uh, but I, I think if you can find some way to, to, to protect that, that's cost-effective, I, I don't have an issue there.
Is there a possibility, maybe I asked the engineer this, or is there a possibility, I know when you come in, uh, near the former Ball Corporation, that underpass and so forth, there's a yield on both sides. And, um, you know, I don't think it's always followed and so forth, but, uh, um, and I'm probably bad about doing, not yielding, but, um, would that be something that would be feasible, in other words, instead of making it just one way? I mean, I know that's the logic here, making it, instead of making it one way, that we could do something similar with some sort of light, that, you know, but I guess you would be backing traffic up off of Texas Avenue if you did that, is that correct?
Yeah, that'd be the problem. The alleyway is only ten feet wide, there's, there's a paved section that's ten feet wide.
Well, I'd just like to be able to, if, you know, I had a citizen here tonight, he's been there sixty-five years, and, you know, it's been this way for sixty-five years. And, uh, you know, we have a lot of alleys in the city of Bristol, Virginia, you know, and, uh, you know, I'd like to keep it as close to how we used to have it as always, I mean, I really would, but, uh, you know, and I, I see what you're saying, there's no way, although, Mendota Road, you've been at Mendota Road, it's probably not much wider than, than that, realistically. And, you know, so, I mean.
My question would be, with the, with the width of the road, if there's a full-size truck sitting at the stop sign on Candy Alley pulling out to Texas Avenue, and another full-size truck is coming down Texas Avenue wanting to turn down Candy, is there enough room for both of those full-size vehicles to pass one another?
No.
Then that's an issue.
Is there any way to make any kind of a, uh, side, where somebody can pull off to the side and so forth? Or do we have any properties or any way to do that kind of right away?
There's really no room in there to do anything, it's a, I think it's a fifteen-foot right away, I'm not certain about that. But there's not enough right away without buying land. And to me, the best solution, again, like you said, was to make it one-way exiting, the traffic counts coming in off of Texas are about a hundred, average about a hundred and twenty a day, which is not a lot of traffic. And then exiting is about a hundred and forty-two. And so, it's, it just makes sense to exit rather than enter, that way you don't have, ever have people waiting out on Texas Avenue. And I think, again, the guard rail, I think that if we're gonna protect her home, you know, we're kind of stuck between letting them drive it and protecting her home. And so I think we need to have, a guard rail is probably the best solution, even though it's about five thousand dollars.
Do the people that are here from Candy Alley, do you have any input that you want to make and so forth regarding this about, we've, we've talked, we're talking up here about a one-way ingress, uh?
Can you come up to the podium?
Yeah, please, please, sir, please, if you don't mind, sir.
Hi, I'm Jack Johnson, I've been in the neighborhood sixty-five years, physically lived in the neighborhood for fifty years. Uh, mowed the lawn when it was Dyess Grocery, everything.
I don't remember.
You sat out on the rock and drank RC and ate moon pies. Now, that's how, and to my knowledge, we've never had any problem with Candy Alley. Now, the residents there had some pretty healthy parties.
The, the corner house there?
No, the one that's complaining.
The one that's complaining that lives on Texas?
Yeah, had quite a few healthy parties. Like I said, the fence was hit years ago, nothing. They were done to here recently. The gas main's been there at least twenty to twenty-five years. It was put there, and it should have never been put there because all of the, all the, uh, utilities are on the other side of the house. My, my, my point is, the gas company needs to get up there, move that gas meter, and the property owner or the gas company pay for doing it, we don't be needing to do all this stuff to cost the city and raise our taxes.
No, sir, we don't, that's what I asked, Mr. Eads, bottom line is, we don't own it, they can move it, they have the means and the revenue to do it. It would be stupid, you do, do you disagree with the one-way in and out, sir, because of that?
I would like to see it, say like it is, but I will agree, you know, one-way.
Okay.
But it would look like it's been that way, and it's not been that way, and far as seeing trash out there, I go out there about every day, I'm not seeing any trash or broken windows.
Well, I don't think that would have a monopoly on trash in the city of Bristol, Virginia in the yard, do you, sir? I mean, realistically, I mean, you know.
No, we have, we have enough trouble trying to get y'all up there to sweep the streets.
Well, I don't doubt that either, and all you're doing is sweeping up dirt when you sweep the streets, okay? But be honest with you, but, but the point I'm making is, realistically, I, I've, I've seen trash all over Bristol on the side of the roads, and I don't think this is the only place that attracts people's own trash and so forth.
Go down Texas Avenue, look in the ditch, you don't have to go far.
That's what I think, okay, I get you.
So, but, uh, like I said, I, I've lived here all my life, I've had any problem, like I said.
No problems?
No problem.
You mean, ever been in an accident sixty-five years on that street?
Never, everything. And, you know, people, basically stop there, or let each other out, or back, you know, back up a little bit, no problem. Now, the city don't realize you can't get the fire department through the underpass. That's a closure, that's a closure right there. Okay, you can't get a fire department across the bridge, so you only got two activities there to get into it. And like you said, when it snows, that's the easiest way in and out, because, you know, I realize the city can't get to all the streets, but that's the levelst way for us to get out and in.
That's the only level place in that area, that's the only level place basically in that whole area?
Right, it gives us, you know, access to Valley Drive, which, you know, is, you know, sweat. So we're going to, if we get to Valley Drive, it's no problem, but going up hills and round curves.
It's dangerous doing that, more traffic, more danger, right?
Right, you know, going out, you got a hill straight down into a guard rail, two places. You can't, like I said, you can't get a fire.
Do you know how long the person owns this property right here that wants all these changes?
Probably about twenty-five years.
They've lived there twenty-five years?
Yeah.
Have they changed ownership though in twenty-five years?
Not to my knowledge. And everything, and I don't think she's even staying there now.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking you, so she's not living there now, some of her family members are living there?
Nobody, last few weeks, we kinda watched, no activity. Matter of fact, one of the residents said that they seen a moving land in there.
Didn't you say People Incorporated bought it?
I think they, they bought it years ago and fixed it up, if I'm not mistaken, was how that originally.
Somebody bought it.
They're still on it, they're just renting it.
Okay, let me call you gentlemen, somebody said, Mr. Eads told me that, that we had two inches of land, or is the law in the state of Virginia, if you use it more than fifteen years, I mean, fifteen years, it belongs to people, the city.
Well, that's what's called adverse possession, and it's not quite as easy, you'd have to file an adverse possession claim and go through the court system. Uh, so there's several elements that have to be met on the legal side in order to prove adverse possession on behalf of the city. Would we potentially have a claim for it? Yes, could we possibly win? Yes, um, but.
I owe you, because I had, had it happen to me.
You know, and, uh, so it, it can happen, but.
Yeah, because I'm paying property taxes on twenty-foot land that don't even exist.
So, talk to the commissioner.
After November.
December, or November, yeah.
Sixth.
Seven.
Seven, one of those days.
Seven.
Yeah, I said I am a registered voter.
I know you are.
And I, uh, support what the city council's doing right now.
Do you?
Yes.
Or just discuss?
All right, anything else?
That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, thank you for your input, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it sounds like we got all the input, I think, uh, contact the gas company and see what they can do to relocate the gas main, and, uh, we'll go from there.
I'd like to make another suggestion.
Oh, yeah, you can come up and talk if you got some more comment on this, sure, come on up.
Thank you. I'm the owner, I live at the corner out, when you look out that alley, I live at the corner of Luttrell and Madison. Luttrell would, Candy Alley would be Luttrell if it came on through, basically the way it's set up, I've lived there forty-seven years. I get beer bottles in my yard, put them in the city trash can to haul them off. Uh, I've had a guy turn a car over in my yard right against my gas meter. I didn't ask the city to come and put some columns or anything up, because it's my gas meter and it's my yard, so, uh, these people, as soon as they bought this house from People Incorporated, asked that the alley be closed. Uh, Mr. Leonard was on the city council then, he lived right around the corner on Madison, and he objected to it, and it didn't happen. So now it came back again, I don't know why, why, but, uh, you know, uh, it, the first person, I know it ran into the fence was a young lady, she was driving drunk. And as far as I know, that fence hadn't been repaired, and that's been several years back. So, uh, it's, uh, it's the best way for us to get in and out of there. Guy came in my yard Sunday on a motorcycle because he, he would normally went out the alley and turned out there where you can see, and I was coming up and he was coming around, and he cut a little short, he ended up in the yard because he had to do that. Well, it's the same way when you get out the corner of Madison with Rhode Island, there's always cars there, and, uh, these are rental units of people not that familiar because they're always in and out, you know, about three months is a, a long time for some of them to stay. And a lot of these people that are throwing beer bottles and things, they, they're running around Tennessee tags because they're not gonna be able here just long enough for a landlord to kick them out, so, uh, that, that's what's going on with all that, and, uh, you know, it's all part of the drug issues and everything, I mean, that's, well, so, uh, we, you know, it's, it's hard to protect people from that kind of ignorance.
Well, let me, so are, are you suggesting, you're saying this has come up before in a council, when Mr. Leonard, God rest his soul, um, whatever.
These same folks, yes, I mean, Mr., well, Mr. Foot's deceased.
Were they making the same, um, claims that there was beer bottles and there was risk and so forth then? Do you realize, do you recognize that?
I think so, I think, uh, uh, you know, it's because it's so close to their fence, and I think they were complaining about the noise too, but, uh, you know, we all have to live with noise if we live anywhere near a road.
Well, until after eleven o'clock, I think that's curfew and so forth, after eleven, you can call the police or something like that, but, uh, you, it, it, the people that live here and so forth, you know, I've asked this question of Mr. Johnson, are there people that actually habitat, live in that home?
Well, as far as I know, Ms. Foot still lives there, uh, uh, I don't know where she is now, I mean, I have no idea.
Well, have you heard?
It doesn't look like, we haven't seen any activity in.
Have you heard about parties there, have there been parties there at times?
Over the years, yes, they'd have reunions and they would basically close down the alley themselves, I mean, they would, they would have to move out of the alley to, for you to come by when they were having, uh.
So they basically treated it as their, as theirs, they treated it as theirs at times?
Yes, sir, at times. And, uh, they're gonna put more, uh, traffic on this other little alley, it's like a block out, or a.
Yeah.
And you, uh, Cor, C O R A L, I believe, is.
Is that the alley that runs behind East End Church?
Right, it runs behind East End Church, it's used by the church and it's used by all the residents.
I was gonna say, that's even narrower than Candy Alley is.
Right, it, it's not near as wide as Candy Alley, one thing possibly would be to have a mirror, where if you come up Texas Avenue, you can see if anyone's in the alley.
Well, that's not a bad idea.
I mean, we did it for forty-seven years, we've never hit anyone, and, and we've never been hit, so.
How many times have you run, driven that alley and had to, you know, figure out a way to pull in somewhere because there's another vehicle coming, sir?
Uh, well, that, uh.
In forty-seven years, I'm asking, how many times does that happen in forty-seven years?
Well, I mean, but, uh, many, many times, you have to be courteous to, uh, the person that has the most room, courteous to the person that doesn't.
Where do you go then, where do you go then, sir, when that happens? Where do you have?
Well, there's room to come off, I mean, there's, there's some parking areas in front of the houses. And you pull off in one of those, uh, areas, or, or you can really, uh, get on the edge of the alley and the person can go by.
Do people gun it down that alley, sir?
Not very often, I mean, there's a couple of little pot rotters, but that's several. But, uh.
Have you ever known there to be an accident in that alley?
No.
Sir, most of the people that use that alley are the neighbors.
I, I assume that, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
There's very seldom you ever see a stranger, somebody you don't know.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any questions from council?
No, but I appreciate the input.
Mr. Johnson.
Oh, okay.
Well, ask the chief, he's sitting to your right.
Further right.
We don't know. And make him hold, hold him to it, if he just told you, yeah, we'll do it, then hold him to it.
I said, get us some more people, we would do it.
Oh, okay, well, pay, pay more taxes, folks, and we'll get more people.
Uh, re-control the alley, and they may not see us, re-control the area.
Let's not have any sidebar conversations, let's get back to the agenda. All right, we're moving on to the animal shelter discussion.
Council. Uh, council, uh, several, here we go, several weeks ago, I'm just gonna go to the, I wanna go to the end. Anyway, several weeks ago, we, I'd shown, uh, council several different options for an animal shelter, at one of those discussions, uh, it was requested that I contact other localities in regards to their interest in potentially housing our animals, uh, with an animal shelter. We contacted thirteen different localities, and in, in that thirteen, there were several different veterinarian hospitals that we contacted requesting, uh, quotes if they would be interested in housing our animals. At this time, we did not receive those quotes closed, or that R F P closed on October the sixteenth, we did not receive one response. Um, which leaves us right now with either building an animal shelter. I'd sent you all a letter yesterday from Dr. Allen from Jones Animal Hospital. And I'm going to inquire with him if there's any sort of long-term potential that we could have. I called and left a message today and have not heard anything back from him today. But maybe before we move forward, I'll have another discussion with Dr. Allen to see if there would be any interest in a, a long-term solution with him. I'm gonna be quite honest, in the conversations I've had with him in the past, I don't think there's gonna be any interest to do that. So I wanna go over here to the very end and recap where we're at. The recommendation that I previously made still will be the same recommendation. Uh, locate this on Shakesville Road, we can use our city's skilled labor force to build the facility, it would be a forty-by-eighty center block building. And they would construct everything, I think the only thing that we would have to put out for bid would be the plumbing, uh, just to ensure that the plumbing's done correctly due to the number of trains that we're gonna have to have for each of the bays for the animals. Um, absent any, uh, sort of discussion with Dr. Allen, I honestly think we're gonna be at this, um, this is gonna be the solution for the city at this time. I can potentially, um, we can probably have a short-term solution with Washington County, but that's not gonna be a long-term solution. And we'll be in the same boat six months to a year down the road again, talking about the same thing. And honestly, we're probably gonna be looking at an initial outlay of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the construction of this facility. And, um, then we'll have the ongoing cost with employees and the expenses associated with running an animal shelter, so, uh, to be on the conservative side, I would say you're looking at a annual budget amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, potentially a little bit less, but, uh, I feel comfortable saying that we could run the animal shelter on two hundred and fifty thousand a year.
Any comments? I just find it hard to imagine if we can't find.
I just find it hard to imagine that we can't find a, a facility out there right now that's willing to take and house our, our stray animals.
And let me say this too, um, Mr. Sora, the city manager with City of Bristol, Tennessee. I contacted him Mon- Monday, yeah, today's Tuesday, contacted him yesterday. I know they're having some issues with their animal shelter over on the Bristol, Tennessee side. He's currently at a conference and will not be back in the office till Thursday, but he said he would contact me on Thursday. So there's a potential maybe for a solution with Bristol, Tennessee. Uh, so as, as it stands right now, I'm waiting on a return phone call from Dr. Allen and I'm also waiting on a return phone call from, uh, Mr. Sora. And potentially amongst us, we can get something worked out at some point. But, um, I'm not recommending that you all give me the green light to go ahead and start constructing this tomorrow. But I just want to let you know that I'll probably be coming back in the very near future asking for an appropriation to go ahead and be able to build this facility.
It's my opinion, we need to aggressively find another solution because a quarter of a million dollar operating cost on top of our strained budget right now is, we need to avoid that if there's any way possible.
Well, I can, we've had two sets of RSPs go out for this.
I understand that.
We have, I mean, I've personally talked to Dr. Allen. You know, to be quite candid, lots of veterinarians just don't want to put down a healthy animal.
I don't blame them.
And, um.
I don't blame them.
And I, and I think as we get further along in society, I think we'll see more veterinarians that way. So I think turning to veterinarian, to a veterinary hospital specifically to house animals for an animal shelter, then put them down after five or seven days, I think we're gonna find less and less of that. And, you know, we have, oftentimes, we have a lot of citizens willing to voice their opinion and say they'll help. But when it comes to the rubber meat in the road, um, that help usually doesn't find its way back to city hall.
Mr. Eads, let me ask you something. Now, this quarter million dollars, how much is a building itself of that quarter million?
No, that's just the operating budget on a yearly basis.
So it's, is that, would that be counting paying lease on the properties or anything along those lines? Capital appreciation or anything along those lines?
Well, what we would, the initial construction costs, we're estimating roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We think we can get it built for less, but I'd rather be on the high end than come in and tell you it's gonna cost fifty, then I'd be asking for more money.
If you don't have to pay for the property.
We don't have to pay.
You don't have to pay for the building.
Right.
And you just have that donated, okay?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we have Lowe's or Home Depot or Builders First Source want to donate us the block and some, uh.
What if you have the building, though? I'm saying, if you have the building, all you have to do is retro it and it's given to the city. It's donated to the city, except for staffing and so forth and so on. I mean, that's my question to you. That seems like to me that some people might be able to do that and would want to do that. I don't know that a dog, a stray dog, I want to take care of our animals, but I don't know that they need to Taj Mahal.
Well, we have actually gone out and looked at two different facilities that people, at that time, they wanted to sell it, sell us to.
I'm talking about giving it.
Well, I understand that, but I'm telling you what happened. Um, the two people approached us about selling, uh, facilities in order to use it as an animal shelter. Lots of times retrofitting that building to an animal shelter, uh, I think one would have probably cost us close to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to retrofit it. It was just in, it was just in the type of condition that it basically had to be rebuilt. And then I think the other facility, if I'm not mistaken, they estimated, um, I think they said probably fifty to seventy-five thousand. I can't remember off the top of my head. But that was in addition to purchasing the property as well. Now, if we have someone that wants to donate something, we can always go out and look and see what that cost of retrofitting it because there are state regulations that we have to abide by.
That's what I was gonna ask you, so in other words, governments even got in on animal shelters?
Yeah, I mean, there's certain things, you can't cross-contaminate water, each, you know, each bay has to have its own drain. It's a, um, there's, there's a lot of different things that we have to do in order to comply with state regulations.
Well, you tell somebody from the city to come by and look at some property and tell me how we can retrofit some property that we own in the city to at least make a dent in what we need to do right now. Not buying it, you know, not leasing it, not asking for anything. But I'm not gonna put anything in there either as far as my family's expenses and so forth. But we'd be more than happy to donate a building, maybe two, one for dogs, one for cats, you know? Maybe even his and hers, I mean, who knows, you know? Uh, but, uh.
Cold running water.
Well, I don't know, I'm not sure if that building has water in it, but I mean, look, I, if you can do that, if, if that saves money, then, you know, there's property there that we don't really need.
Well, we also have to be, uh, be conscious of zoning, uh, depending on where it's located. We may have to go back and ask for rezoning. We have to have a public hearing in regards to that. Um, not saying it can't be done, I'm just, you know, there are certain obstacles that we'll have to.
We can look at it and just see.
Well, that's what, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I'm saying, is let's open that up at least a possibility to, to do something on a short-term basis and hopefully our financial situation gets better in a couple of three years. But, I mean, realistically, I'm putting that offer out there to you, Mr. Eads, but I don't know what you, I don't know what, I don't read state regs on what dogs and cats need and stuff like that, I've got too much other stuff to do. But if you can tell me that and look at this property and so forth and figure out a cheap way to do it, mechanism to do it, I'm, again, volunteering it.
Okay.
Period.
Mr. Main?
What's to address the property?
Mr. Flainer would like for you to, uh, potentially come out and, where's Dana?
Do you know where the gray house is across from my office? Okay, there's an old barber shop, used to be a barber shop right beside there, okay? That one. And there's another building beside it. And there's another building beside it. You can take your picks, which would be the easiest to retrofit it. Because I'm gonna tell you what, I'd rather just take care of, help animals than I would people. Because they don't, you know, cheat you, they love you, they lick you, they do whatever and love on you. And so, I'm just saying, Mr. Main, you come out, let me know when you're coming so I can make sure that myself or my wife lets you look in at all the buildings, is that fair enough, sir? Thank you, sir.
Is that good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, anything else on that?
I'll report to y'all what I find out in the next few days and we'll go from there.
Our next item is item, um, F, Industrial Development Authority Discussion.
Uh, council, I was requested that this be put on the agenda for discussion. Uh, going back, look through some of the history in regards to, um, what has been, what has happened with IDA in the past. It appears that on November the eighth of last year, it was brought to council's attention that there was an ordinance to repeal, reenact and rename the Industrial Development Authority. So there was a first reading of that on November the eighth. And at that first reading, uh, Mr. Hubbard, Mr. Mumpower, Mr. Hartley, uh, voted yes to rename, reenact and repeal the Industrial Development Authority. Mr. Flainer was absent that day. There was also a public hearing in regards to a charter change. Uh, because in our charter, we have an Economic Development Committee section that basically needs to be amended and potentially just wiped out and changed altogether. And at that time, uh, the same individuals voted yes for that. And then on December the thirteenth, this was brought back before council, at which time those were, um, it was tabled, uh, there was a motion, um, by Mr. Hubbard, uh, to table the second reading of the ordinance. And, um, Mr. Flainer made a motion to table the, uh, Mr. Hubbard made a motion to table the second reading of the ordinance for the charter change. Mr. Flainer made the motion to table it, uh, for the repeal, reenact and rename the Industrial Development Authority. So it's been tabled, brought to council before, tabled. We're sitting on a potential second reading, however, I think so much time has elapsed, we would need to start over. Uh, I don't think it'd be appropriate to have a second reading on some of these at this time. But, um, this is for y'all's discussion to tell me how you want to move forward now.
Well, I, 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 I ask it to be put on the agenda and I think, Mr. Wingard, you agreed that it should be, have it put on the agenda. I can call, it's supposed to be the Industrial Development Authority, is that correct? I call it the Industrial Devastation Authority, okay? Because if you look, realistically, industrial means just that word. Go look in the dictionary what industrial means. It is manufacturing and so forth, it is not retail, okay? It is not retail. So obviously, when this authority was created, it's pretty crystal clear that they didn't understand the dynamics and the words and the language and the definition between industrial and economic development, okay? The lines were blurred. Now, when we, when I tabled this, I asked to have it tabled and it was approved to table. At that point in time, I suggested that we need to narrow down the number of people on this board, if we rename it. I personally would prefer the council have involvement, at least one councilman, perhaps two, and make it five members as opposed to seven. And I would like to see some of the newer people who are on the authority now, the, uh, latest members to be on there, stay there. And the older members who were involved with, and you can go back and, it's on the video, folks, go back and look at the Falls announcement and look who was on IDA then. And look who was on city council then. Is it any wonder Bristol, Virginia's in the mess it's in? They sat over here when they had the Falls announcement and they didn't have one business person, to my knowledge, on IDA then. There was only five then. One's done his stint in federal pen, okay? Now, the bottom line, I'm gonna move that we change at the appropriate time, Mr. Eads. We need to keep, the, 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 the people in the back of the room need to either quit talk or whatever because, I mean, realistically, it's disturbing, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's inappropriate. Now, I'm gonna make a motion, or I'm gonna ask that this be put on the agenda, to change the name, okay? Because obviously, the name change needs to be in accord with how the industrial authority has conducted business. And I'm also gonna ask, at the appropriate time, that it be five members, at least one member of Bristol City Council. I think it would be good to have a BVU representative as a, not a, a non-voting member, but someone, because we're talking about the economic vitality, they can be involved, they can find mechanisms for industrial development, okay? But realistically, Industrial Development Authority in this city has been a fool's errand for however long it's been there, a fool's errand. They've done the bidding of council and they've screwed this city, period. So that's what I want and I'll fight for it and I'll go down for it. But there is a difference, folks, between, and if you don't know the definition of differences, economic means just that, economic, and industrial means just that. And they haven't abided by their own language since they've been enacted.
A lot of other cities have done the same thing, changed it to EDA.
Well, and I agree, but.
The same reason. It's not descriptive enough.
Yeah, I think, um, my, my position is you have to do a little bit more than a name change. I mean, you know, Economic Development Authority, Economic Development Commission, okay, that makes sense because it's more of just, you know, recruiting one aspect of the economy. Um, but you gotta have more teeth in it, you gotta have more structure to it. So an example would be, you know, when BVU got in trouble, right? They, they basically changed the law and they said, okay, we want to make sure that representation from all of the stakeholders, uh, that BVU services, right, is gonna be on the board. So it wasn't just arbitrary, it was, we're gonna have somebody from Washington County, somebody from Scott County, blah, blah. So if you think about that thought process, you know, it could apply here for the Economic Development Commission, right? Now, you could do it one of two ways. You could say that, you know, if you really want to do good economic development, you know, you gotta have somebody that's in the finance business. And you gotta have somebody that's, uh, you know, maybe in the legal business, you gotta have somebody, you know. So you could structure it that way because if you don't get the expertise on the EDC, you're not gonna get the outcome you want. And that's a fact. So the problem is being.
The outcome's up.
Hang on. The problem is being, the expertise on that IDA has not been sufficient enough.
That's right.
To have the oversight for this city and that's the problem. Now, nothing against the people, I don't point fingers, I'm telling you, you've gotta have the right expertise. The way you set that up is you develop the people on that board properly. They have to have certain qualifications or they can't be seated on that board. So if you don't do that, you end up with a very bad outcome. That's a fact. Now, I would support a name change, but I'm gonna support some kind of a restructure of who gets seated on that board and the process they go through to be seated.
Amen.
Another way is you do it by sectors of the city. You could do it by industrial zone one, you could do it by industrial zone two, retail zone three. You could have somebody in those regions that live in the city, you know, to be representing those, those regions that we have pockets of economic development. So, you know, I'm not sitting here saying I agree or disagree with one way or another, I'm just saying you gotta have some structure to it. Because the way it's been done has just been very arbitrary, very arbitrary and capricious, by the way.
Absolutely.
Right? And so therefore, you've got the issues you've got. So we, we bring these on ourselves by not setting these committees and commissions up properly. So a business is never going to set a, a very important committee up without putting the right people on it. And they're gonna be vetted and it's gonna be very difficult. And they don't want, they wouldn't put somebody there, they'll leave the seat open until they find the right person.
Amen.
Instead of putting a person there that doesn't meet the qualification, they'd leave it empty. So I think the BVU approach has worked out well. Um, you know, it's worked out well from a standpoint of you got the right representation and the right expertise from the different, um, areas. So I would say we need to think about setting this up that way. I would also say that we probably need to put this as part of the scope of the forensic audit, that we've all, we've all seen what's happened over the last four to five years and one of the items in the forensic audit ought to be for them to audit the IDA in detail of all the transactions that's occurred through the IDA, right, over the last, whatever time period we're gonna set the audit up for. And that they have complied with state law and that everything was done financially appropriately through all the contracts and leading up to today.
Absolutely.
And then let them make a recommendation based on that audit, a recommendation of how they would view the committee to be established or the commission to be established, right? How they would view it to be structured properly in order, in order to not have the issues that they uncover. So we can't sit here and know what those issues are, but let's say they uncover issues and I'm sure they will. So they should then come with a recommendation of how to structure that commission so that you take care of those issues going forward. And that's exactly what happened with BVU, right? It was restructured to take care of those issues that had occurred in that organization. So that's kind of my two cents.
Well, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with you wholeheartedly and, um, you know, I went and I give kudos to where they need to be. Senator Carrico passed the bill, took the bill up there. I went with Mr. Bowman to the committee, subcommittee on local government, spoke. We had our city attorney and our economic development person paid to go up there.
This is about the IDA.
Yes, you just, wait just a minute.
Well, we don't talk about BVU.
You know, chill, you chill. And they had the Bristol, Virginia attorney paid by taxpayers. You all, go bear and watch Mr. Bowman and I testify about this change, okay? Mr. Bowman and I testified, BVU board didn't want to change, they didn't want to give up any control. And Mr. Mumpower is a representative on the city board right now, I mean, on BVU board. And I'm gonna tell you what, it's, 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 it's made a difference. It's made a difference. But we had spies paid by the city and, and lobbyists, as much as we're behind in money, IDA paid a lobbyist sixty thousand dollars. But that was supported by two members of council that are here tonight. Now, that's just a waste of money and I don't need a spy when I do and say what I think is right. Mr. Mumpower, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your leadership. We're, we're gonna go forward, we're gonna make some changes. I agree, industrial development and so forth, people need to be involved in this. Citizens that have some common sense and some education and some training in economics need to have a say-so. And we can never, ever lapse back to the stupidity that we've had in this board before. So let's make the changes, let's do what we need to do. And, Mr. Mayor, I expect your leadership in this going forward. And we'll talk about, when we get into this, we'll talk about what former council has done as far as paying monies and allowing IDA to have a free rein of your money. Sixty thousand dollars too for an attorney, who happened to be the same attorney as the City of Bristol, Virginia had. Hundred and sixty-nine from the city, sixty thousand from the cit, from IDA. Now, how in the heck can IDA be independent and have the same attorney? How can you represent two entities? And the answer is, you can. And the answer is, you cannot. I look forward to the legal audit, I look forward to the financial fiscal audit, and I look forward to the people that have done Bristol the way they've done it. People getting jobs they shouldn't have, and so forth and so on, being eliminated. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Haver.
Uh, just have to say that you don't understand the function of the IDA, why they were set up by the state of Virginia in the first place.
Well, obviously, they didn't either.
Well, I'm just saying that they were set up...
Explain to us the...
All right, yeah, explain.
To allow cities to buy properties. We can't do it directly, we can do it through an IDA. That's all it is, is a vehicle to let us do that. IDA never makes any final decisions, that's council's decision to make decisions on anything. The IDA looks at it, makes some, you know, some guess at minutes to whether it looks decent enough, but we still are making the final decision on all their stuff. They do what we tell them to. It's strictly, uh, and to say, the state set it up many years ago to allow this to happen. It wasn't meant to really go out and recruit or anything else. They don't really have a budget until this, uh, revenue bond is sold, they never had any debts or liabilities. So it's, uh, that's why, basically, anybody willing to serve could serve on it, because they really, their votes were disrecommendations, they weren't really votes.
That used to be the criteria, except the bottom line is they were handpicked.
It was up to council to look, I thought I was talking...
Hang on, hang on a second, hang on a second.
I'd say it was up to councils to make the decisions as to what was brought forth.
Okay.
We make the final decision like we do on everything in the city.
Okay.
Here's the way I, here's the way I see this. The IDA was set up as a flow-through party for the government to do business that it shouldn't be doing business with in the first place because it's illegal, so they put a loophole out there to have a board in place to do business.
That's correct.
That shouldn't be done in the first place. All right. What, I agree with a lot, Mr. Mumpower said and Mr. Flinger said, not a hundred percent on neither one of them, but the bottom line is, we do need a committee, we, and, that is a checks and balance system. We need qualified people to serve on that board, and in doing so, it would be a checks and balance. Whenever you have five council members that has a board that works at the direction of council only and doesn't have the background to be on that committee, then they're just gonna do everything the committee, the council recommends. But if they're qualified, they're gonna see things and know things that maybe somebody on the council didn't catch, and it's another checks and balance system to keep the city out of trouble and government out of trouble. So if we put the right people on there, we will be stronger for it.
I don't object to that, I'm just saying that that's...
Because when these companies come before the IDA and the planning commission, and they're asked questions by the committees that they're coming before, it needs to be education, edu, educated questions that have meat and merit, not some off the wall and you're sitting back there listening and you're shaking your head, I can't believe they just asked that question, or made that comment. We have got to step it up. And if we have, if we do away with the IDA and change the name to an EDA, and I, I agree with five, five members, and I don't...
Let me, let me just kinda stop you on that five members. The state code requires seven.
Okay, then that's seven, seven.
Hundred fifteen point two, like, forty-nine oh four.
Okay. But I'm not for sure that somebody on council has to be there.
It's a shout.
It's just seven qualified people that can work with council and not end up in a stupid situation like we did in the past with the Falls and everything else, the landfill, the golf course, everything we've done.
It's been stupid.
We need business people.
That was done by the council.
I understand.
The IDA could've said all day long, don't do it, but they still could've done it.
We've had one councilman that's done, all three of them, we have one city councilman that's served all the times and did the, the golf course, the landfill, and the Falls. A hundred million dollars in debt, one councilman that the people kept electing over and over after he got beat one time, he came back again, and so forth and so on, but I'm gonna say this, all you all out here in TV land too, go punch in after you do this YouTube, and look at the Falls development when they came up here and they had the big rollout show, and you look over here at the IDA that they had then, there was five, by the way, then, Mr. Reeves, unless two weren't present, okay? I don't, I don't know, but back then, there was five. And they sat here, and one sat there, the one that sat there had been in prison, has served a time in prison. Uh, bottom line is, you tell me, folks, you tell me, after you look at that, were we in good hands? I'm not just talking about the five up here, I'm talking about the five that sat there. That's, we can do better. If we can't, then we don't need to have this IDA at all. We could, or whatever you call it. Because that's, that's, you know, I think reading and writing should start as a criteria. You have to be able to put a paragraph together cohesively. Maybe that'll be the first criteria for whoever wants to serve. Because I'm telling you, there's people that I think can't do that, that we've had. I don't think they spell cat.
That's what the K is.
It's K.
But anyway, we've got enough council, we've got three councilmen that wanna look at a new option, so we need to start talking about it, and I would like to act on it fairly soon. I would like to have a new EDA in place, starting out the first of the year. That would be my goal.
Amen.
All right, any other discussion?
Now, we can go ahead.
Next, uh, next item is G, debt restructuring.
Now, council, if y'all don't mind, I'm gonna, this one I'm gonna do from the podium, Council, we've been, uh, discussing our debt restr, our debt for quite some time now. Something wrong, Mr. Haver?
I hear somebody talking, or radio playing, or something. I've heard it all night. I guess it's the birds.
It's birds.
Those pigeons.
It's a temple, man. All right, sorry.
That's okay. Uh, for several months, we've been discussing the debt of the city and how we need to put a handle on the debt and how we need to go forward. So over the past several weeks, uh, I've been in, uh, discussions with Davenport and Company, I've been reviewing our budget, been discussing matters with the CFO, and trying to determine what's gonna be the best solution for the city moving forward, because as this council knows and citizens know, there is a debt repayment that's looming in twenty-nine, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, and we cannot make a forty-one million dollar debt payment in that fiscal year as it stands, so we have to refinance some of our debt. As we've discussed in the past, Davenport and Company was here last meeting, and they proposed four options. And so what I've done, I, there's, my scenario is based on funding scenario one, which is the most aggressive option in regards to debt repayment that we have. And in order to do that, um, there are some assumptions that have to be made. One, there would be a five cent tax increase in fiscal year eighteen nineteen and fiscal year nineteen twenty. However, there will be a, uh, a vote for, an election for new council members this coming May, and if the council may need to be concerned that a new council may not increase that five cent taxes. So there could be a potential for a ten cent tax increase in fiscal year eighteen nineteen. Secondly, the landfill will no longer require general fund transfer. That means raising rates and reducing expenditures at the landfill in order to make, uh, scenario one work. Secondly, we'll have to, uh, have an increase in the anticipated real estate tax revenue, and that is based on scenarios that I've discussed with each of you, with businesses that are coming online, and hotels that are coming into the city, and things of that nature, and we have to go on the assumption that everything will work appropriately without any hiccup whatsoever, and that things come online when they're supposed to come online. Uh, we are also, would be looking at an increase in potential sales tax from those businesses, uh, utility tax, I know Sunset is in the process of purchasing BVU, so we will be getting some utility taxes, uh, through that source that we're not getting at the moment. And finally, there's a machine and equipment tax, depending on the businesses that come into the city, we will have some tax revenue that we have not anticipated or received in the past, which would be a relatively significant amount. Next, we're including a, at least two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue from the Falls. Now, what you have to realize is, we've already budgeted in, uh, into our budget, uh, revenue that we're currently getting from the businesses at the Falls, but this is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in addition to what we're already getting. And that would be with the opening of all these, the opening of some other stores that will be coming online as well, and we hope that the businesses that are there will continue to grow and produce more tax revenue than they have in the past. And furthermore, I'm hoping that two hundred and fifty thousand is the minimum that we would see from the Falls in the future. Next, there would be a reduction in force of eleven employees in fiscal year eighteen and nineteen, and fiscal year nineteen and twenty, so you're looking at a reduction in force of twenty-two, uh, employees from the city of Bristol. And finally, uh, there will be a freeze on all capital items to include the leasing of equipment, which would be effective immediately. And as this council is aware, there has been a capital improvement plan that was presented to you that went out through twenty twenty-two, I believe, um, anything in that capital plan would no longer be able to be funded if we chose option one. Currently, based on scenario one, and based on being as conservative as I can be, and also being aggressive as I can be, so that I can present something to you, we are gonna have a shortfall of one point three million dollars to meet the, uh, debt payment in twenty, in nineteen and twenty. Um, so in order to offset that shortfall, it would require an additional fourteen, fourteen cent real estate tax increase, or a combination of other revenue and generating cost-saving measures. And that would include cost, uh, raising taxes on cigarette taxes, personal property taxes, a, a variety of different options in order to make up that shortfall. Plus, we would probably be looking, instead of cutting eleven people in nineteen, uh, twenty, we'd probably have to cut further, uh, in order to make up that shortfall.
Are you saying with all the revenue projections you did on the first page, that you're still gonna come up one point three million short?
That's correct.
Mm-hmm. What happens if we have to buy ice cream?
I guess we won't be...
Maximize every possible revenue that we have that's coming on stream, and you've cut everything we can cut, so everything is in all one basket. What happens if somebody says you gotta buy ice cream? You gonna have no money, no way to get it, except another gouge of the property tax?
Well, we'll be making it ourself, but remember, this is an assumption that I made based on the fact if scenario one works, two, three, and four will also work. Okay? So if you wanna take it for what it is right now, scenario one is not gonna work unless you do like Mr. Hubbard states and further increase taxes and have further cuts. And this is the decision and the direction that you all are gonna have to give me in order for me to move forward so that we can refinance this debt. We can cut all day long, we can raise taxes all day long, but at the end of the day, it's your all's decision, you all are the elected officials, to tell me how we wanna move forward with this, with this proposal. And I'll make my recommendation here at the end. Here's the summaries. Uh, if you take, uh, those are the fiscal years at the top, um, and scenario one, right now, uh, based on the assumptions that I have, we would have a hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and four dollars to the good. You can see in nineteen twenty, uh, we would not have one point three million dollars in order to make that debt payment. Twenty twenty-one, assuming we can make up that one point three million dollars, we would still fall short nine thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars. From twenty twenty-one forward, we would be to the good, after we would fund that roughly one point three million dollars, we would be to the good, uh, a hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand those following years. Scenario two, uh, we would have in excess of one point two million dollars for the debt service payment in eighteen nineteen. In nineteen twenty, we would fall short a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. However, that is something that could be made up, that wouldn't necessarily have to be too drastic. Twenty twenty-one, we would still fall six thousand dollars short, and twenty-one twenty-two, there is a, and I think it has to do with the specific bonds that are being repaid at that time, we do have a jump, uh, which would require us, we'd still be short a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in twenty-one twenty-two. Scenario three, you can see that we would have in excess of the debt service payment, one point five million, and then it just continues that we would have excess funds available for any sort of debt service payment. And then in scenario four, we would still have excess to be able to make those payments. This is, uh, the incremental cost. If you will look, the blue line is scenario one. Scenario one and two basically mirror each other, they're right on top of one another for a period of time, and then they drop off again in twenty-one twenty-two. You can see that initially, in eighteen nineteen, the blue dot there is roughly one point three million dollars is what we need in addition to our current debt service payment. Then you can see in nineteen twenty, it increases all the way up to three point eight million dollars, and then it drops back down. And you can see how each one of those scenarios plays out over the course of the next four, uh, six fiscal years. Any questions about that so far? Uh, I think this is the final slide. Here is what the debt service payments would be on a graph. You can see in seventeen eighteen, uh, with the refund that we would be getting by refinancing some of that debt, that puts our, uh, debt right at about four point some odd million dollars. You can see in eighteen nineteen, things continue to increase, so in eighteen, on scenario one, our debt service payment is close to, um, seven million dollars, or a little over seven million, I'm sorry, seven and a half. And then you can see, once again, nineteen twenty, it increases to a little over ten million. But the most significant thing here is, you see in twenty-seven and twenty-eight, we go back down to the debt service that we're paying right now. So that would be a huge amount of cash infusion for the city in twenty-seven twenty-eight, but at that time, for those periods of ten years, you are looking at, um, making sure that everything goes according to plan, and, uh, there will be services in the city that may be diminished due to, uh, being that tight on that budget for that length of time. And so that's, that's where we stand right now in regards to the debt service payment and how we get there. We're gonna be short on scenario one. Uh, for the second year. And we'll be short on scenario two, but not to the degree that we cannot find a way to make it work. Scenario three and four are, uh, options that allow, uh, the city to continue to operate, um, without, it'd have the least amount of impact to the citizens and the least amount of impact to the employees of the city of Bristol. And if you want a recommendation, um, at this point, I would go with scenario three.
All right, my comment is, is there is no provision for scenario three to refinance that, uh, sixteen point eight million dollars that is sitting out there right now that we're paying eight hundred thousand dollars a year on.
Nor is, nor is there provision in scenario four to refinance that.
But we can tell.
I have, I've talked with Davenport and Company today about that issue. If we refinance the two thousand and fourteen debt, that is gonna be an increase in principal on our debt service to the tune of three point eight million dollars. Uh, because what has happened in two thousand and fourteen, this debt was set, it was not made callable until twenty twenty-four. And by it not being callable until twenty twenty-four, there is a, I will call it a penalty to pay it off early, is what it amounts to. And that is the only, we can refinance two thousand and fourteen, but if we do, the numbers that I've shown, there's gonna be a greater disparity, plus the numbers that have been presented by Davenport in the past, there'll be a disparity in what our maximum debt service payment will be.
What year did you say, Mr. Reeves?
Twenty twenty-four.
No, but when, when was it done, in twenty fourteen?
Twenty fourteen.
So we gotta pay eight hundred thousand dollars plus every year for the next eight years, our hands are tied.
Correct.
Give us a list, I want a record of who was on council and made that vote. I want a record of who was on council and made that vote.
January, January fourteen.
Well, you had a right to come back in and change it, didn't you? When y'all came in?
No, once it was done.
It was a re, it was a re-five other bonds, as I understand it.
Well, but, Mr. Reeves, realistically, three and four are kicking the can scenarios too, are they not? I mean, realistically, who benefits in three and four? You say that we have more, keep the employees the same, and so forth and so on, and taxes are gonna go up on three and...
And here's, let me... Here's, let me, I'm not saying that you keep the employees the same. At the end of the day, what you have to do in order to run this city efficiently and effectively, we've got to look at every line item to make sure things are ran lean. And one thing that we would do, we would go to a zero budget base on employees. We will bring every department in and review, how many employees do you truly need to run your department? Some departments may be overstaffed at the moment, some may be understaffed. And we need to go through and determine exactly what needs to be done in order to operate efficiently. So we start at zero in every department, then we go up from there. In regards to the citizens, you're going to increase property taxes. Now, those numbers there, scenario three and four, you don't necessarily have to increase property taxes. That's the excess amount that would be, that I have budgeted through my scenarios that we would have. So three and four would allow you actually not to increase property tax. That's money above the maximum debt service limit. So if you take, I don't know if you all have your books with you or not, but if you take scenario three, and we'll just take year 2022. In 2022, under scenario three, the city would pay 8.1 million dollars for our debt service. And if you go to 21, 22, we would have in our budget roughly 9 million dollars because there's a 900,000 dollar excess. So there's a potential that you would not necessarily have to have such a tax increase in order to make scenario three and four work.
One and two don't involve any refinancing of the older bonds?
No, one and two are just solely the notes from the falls.
But they also would require at least 10 cent tax increase.
Correct.
Yeah, but we still can't get there with that. We're still falling short. Scenario one and two, in my opinion, is not even an option.
That's not true. What we're not talking about is there's a lump sum of cash sitting here that we can't talk about in the public domain.
That's right.
And so until that's understood, we cannot make a decision. Hang on a second, you can't say it can't be done because we have a windfall of cash that we all know about. And that has to play out because it is irresponsible to throw this thing out to 2042.
It is.
Until we have to know at the end of the day what those numbers mean. And then we decide, right? Now, time's not on our side, but you can't say there's no way because there is a way.
Ms. Reeves, are you including that possibility in your numbers here or are you not, it's not included? Because that's a big difference, that's what Mr. Mayor was saying.
That makes a big difference.
This one is not included. Now, I do have numbers where it is included, but we will still have issues in 19, 20, and 20 and 21, even with that included, depending on how that money would be set aside for the city. So, I mean, you know, I can sit here and I can go through numbers for the next 10 weeks and come up with every different scenario that you all will.
So even with what I said, scenario one is really difficult.
Scenario one is.
Even if we had this lump sum cash I'm talking about and things work in our favor, right? Scenario one is still an extremely tough scenario. It's going to still involve, it's going to involve some very deep cuts. It's going to involve some revenue generating things that is not going to be very pleasant for anybody unless we wake up and somehow the economic outlook of what rolls into this city changes from what we've seen over the last 12 to 24 months. Now, who's going to bet on that? Well, nobody, nobody in the room's going to bet on that, right? So scenario one is, is the scenario you gotta say, I don't really see a way to really make that one work. I mean, all the dominos have to line up exactly right. But now, scenario two is workable. You know, scenario two is absolutely workable.
I've looked at this and I've thought about it. And to me, really, the problem is, and I think Mr. Hubbard was alluding to this with his comment about ice cream, is you are taking every available bit of cash and putting it to debt. And while none of us want, we want to see this debt get down, we got to keep the city operating. And we still haven't got our unassigned fund balance to where it needs to be to quit borrowing tans. And we're going to use that, that money gets eat up in there. We don't have a reserve fund, a rainy day fund at all. And we sit here and just tonight, we're talking about an animal shelter. And these things that pop up, and I can come up with a dozen different scenarios of things that will pop up, not when, not if, but will pop up over the 10-year course of that. So we committed all our cash to paying debt and we don't have anything. And I wrote down what Mr. Reeves said. He said, and this is the key to this, everything has to work appropriately without hiccup and come online when it's supposed to. And I don't think any of this will. And in fact, that's the problem with all the things that have got us here now. If the falls had worked appropriately without hiccup and come online when it was supposed to, we wouldn't be having this discussion. It's the landfill.
That's what scenario one.
But with any of these scenarios, I think we're tying up all of our cash, too much cash. And if we're having to go, there's a tax increase that puts a burden on the citizens. We're cutting services on top of a tax increase. We're talking about freezing the capital plan. So you're deferring all of these expenses for 10 years, and then you're going to have to make it back up. So to me, we don't need to tie up, well, I think, you know, we could take maybe option three, probably option four, and if we get a little bit ahead, some of these bonds, not like your question, the 2014 isn't callable. Some of these are callable. We could go ahead and pay a little bit ahead and try to chip this down because the difference between three and four isn't that much. But I don't think we need to commit every conceivable bit of cash that we can see to paying debt because we may solve one problem, but in doing so, I'm afraid we're going to create about a half a dozen more in the operations of the city.
The biggest issue is you can't go 10 years without giving a raise to whatever employees we have left. You cut them all down, there's somebody, that one final guy's going to say, I want a raise. We're going to say, well, gosh, we'd love to, we don't have the money, we'll wait 10 years.
Archie, don't worry about 10 years, pal, I'm not worried about it either.
Wow. I'm just saying, realistically, in that term, if we have to put everything in the basket upfront, we have no, we can't vote for that. Now, maybe two can be worked out where we're not putting everything in the basket. And we have some money that we can put aside for emergencies. That's a different animal. But if there's nothing left in reserve, I can't vote for anything like that.
I get that. And can I ask you, is there, I always looked at hybrids, is there any way to split the base between two and three? So to speak, I mean, I was thinking about one and two, but I don't think that's plausible, being realistic.
Cut back on what you're refinancing, that would be one way to hike the payment a little bit, but not as high as two, but higher than three, but not refinancing.
And they would have to take a look at each individual bond issue to see exactly which one would make the most financial sense to do that. I want to go back to some comments that have previously been made. Mr. Hartley's exactly correct. We have to assume that everything goes online as I have planned for it to go online. And I'm going to knock on wood before I say this. If there is an incident at one of the structures that's currently being built that would slow that down for some reason, if there's a fire or an earthquake or something of that nature, you might as well count that revenue out for at least another year, potentially two years. So everything has to work perfectly based on scenario one. Scenario two gives us a little bit more breathing room. And the other thing I want to discuss that Mr. Hartley brought up are the potential for putting more on the principal every year. If you take, we'll just take scenario four, for example. Scenario four is going to require roughly 8.5 million dollars of debt service payment per year. And you can see, we would be budgeted for a 9.5 million dollar debt service payment. If we wanted to, we could apply that extra 1,417,800 dollars to the principal of those bonds. And we could apply that excess every year for a number of years in order to start paying off some of that principal. I had an assumption ran solely on scenario four that 500,000 dollars would be paid back annually if we chose scenario four.
Talking about extra?
Extra, over and above. So basically, instead of an eight and a half million dollar payment, we'd be paying roughly 9 million dollars. But 500,000 of that would be going solely towards the principal. So what does that do for us over the course of paying this debt off? If you go out 10 years, you are looking at 78 million dollar outstanding debt balance by paying an extra 500,000 dollars. Whereas, the way that it's set now, in 2028, we would have 83 million debt balance. So that's saving us 5 million dollars. And it does one more important thing. It also pays the debt off a year early. Instead of paying off the debt in 2042, we would actually be paying the debt off in 2041 by just paying that additional 500,000 dollars. That's just a scenario that I ran in order to determine what paying extra would do for us over the course of the loan. There's plenty of different options to look at. And, you know, the one thing that we all know that's in the room, we've got to get some numbers from another entity to see exactly what the city's going to get back. And then we could probably make a more educated decision on how to move. Right now, there is no assumption in any of these numbers for any money to come because I do not want to assume that money's going to come that's not going to be there.
Well, our branch, you have used conservative numbers that you have chosen to use, so that part's good. But when was the last time everything worked perfectly for Bristol?
I made it to the meeting tonight without an incident, so.
1856, I think, when we became a city. After that, it went to hell. Well, I think Mr. Flainer's got an idea that it's probably going to end up being the best choice, and that's splitting the baby between two and three. But it still depends on a lot of other stuff.
What we've all got to look at and what the Davenport has to look at is when are the bonds callable and when can they be paid? Because you don't want to pay something off prior to being callable because there's basically a penalty involved with that. So we have to be careful with what, you know, what debt we do restructure.
Well, if they had 16 million in the kitty and we're wanting to cut it back, it shouldn't be a problem. Whereas they had already projected we were going to refinance 16 million. Now, we're talking about maybe refinancing only 10 or nine or something like that. So it shouldn't be a problem with early pay because they've already, unless that was a mistake, they didn't think about that on the 16 million.
Well, on the 16.
I don't think that involved 14.
On, now, are you talking about the 2014 bond or a different?
Well, you were saying that 14s, if you call them early, you get a penalty. Well, surely that wasn't in the 16 million they gave us in our study to refinance.
No, I mean, if you look at, if you look on page.
Option three had 16 million or so that they were going to refinance to make the thing work.
Option three, you were refinancing.
I thought option, option three starts the refinance of 16 million.
Option three, you're refinancing the notes, the 2007 C bonds, the 2010 bonds is what you're refinancing with option C. So it's roughly 16 million dollars. If you substitute that in with the 2014 bond, you take out the 2007 and 2010 bonds and substitute in 2014 for that 16 million, maybe I'm not understanding.
All I'm saying is don't pay off all those, don't refinance all those bonds. Instead of 16 million, if you refinance 10 million, then you're splitting the baby between option two and three. And there's no penalties involved, so we don't have to worry about 14.
Take off the 2010 bond, for example.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's how you split the baby on this thing.
Makes sense, too, it makes, it does make sense.
That should help eliminate some of the tax increases, too.
Amen.
Well, that is the problem that I'm having here is we've got these four different options here. And yourself and the chief financial officer have spent two weeks working on these scenarios that, and breaking it all down on what has to happen and ball into place to get to where we need to be. And it's all with the same mindset that's got us, Mr. Hartley nailed it. It's the same mindset that got us to where we're at today. We have to work with the true numbers that we have. Yes, we can allow for marginal growth because we know stuff is coming online. But at the end of the day, we need to have the scenario that has the least impact on this city with the citizens paying taxes and with employees being laid off. They did not do this to us, and we do not need to go after this debt so aggressively that we're penalizing everybody in this city to the maximum level that we can just because we can. I will not vote for one, I will not vote for two. Three is pushing the line with me. But when you look at the least impact on this city, taxpayers and the employees, option four is the best thing that's been presented to us. Now, y'all can go where you want to, but I'm telling you where I'm at. I am not going to do nothing to the people that we do not have to do.
I would agree with that because for the same reasons, plus it gives us more leeway in case something does go wrong.
Absolutely.
And that's.
It is not a perfect world. There are things going to happen next week.
And option four gives us time. And like I say, there's, you know, again, some of what we're talking about. But, you know, we still aren't, if debt was our only financial challenge, then that would be one thing. But we still have to, we haven't completely got where we need to be to get the unassigned fund balance. And then we really do need to try to set some money aside to build a rainy day fund because these things are popping up. They, I mean, you always see things pop up throughout the year. And that way, we have something we could tap into. Right now, you know, the trend, and you're talking about real numbers, last year we were looking at revenues that were going down in some categories. And so, you know, to, if that trend continues, then what do you do? You're going to have to adjust for that as well. So there's a lot of things that could go wrong. And I think if we could get a little bit ahead, that's why I think maybe you could pay a little bit ahead and try to make up some of the difference between three and four. But I think four would be, it's doable and it would give you a lot more flexibility and not have as drastic an impact both on the residents, the employees, and the services of the city.
That's my position on it, too.
Well, my position is if we, if we throw that debt up to 200 million dollars and push it out to 2042, that makes zero sense. You're talking about people that live in this city that aren't even born yet are going to be paying for the mistakes we did in 2010 through 2014. And that's a bunch of BS.
It is, amen.
I don't care how you look at it.
Amen.
It's swallow the pill now. If you're in business, you swallow the pill now. Nobody wants to cut people. Ain't a single person up here wants to cut anybody. Ain't a single person up here wants to increase taxes. It's the last thing we want to do. But you know what, we didn't get us in this mess, but by gosh, we're going to get us out of it. And you got to swallow the pill now, and you got to do what you know you can do and move on. Or you continue to pay for it for another 25 years. Now, you tell, you tell the people, the voting booth that show up and say, do you want to pay for this problem for 25 more years? Because I want to see your hands. I want you to stand up and tell me who you are and how you come to that conclusion.
You just asked for it.
Good, let's hear it.
Oh, yeah. How many properties you have? You don't want a tax increase, do you?
Over 60 in the city. I'd organize a sweep-out tournament, more than there are two minutes to do.
Come on up.
You boys may not have laid the coffin out, you may not have laid the body in. But let me tell you what you're getting ready to do. With that kind of talk, you're going to drive the nails in the lid, okay? Now, I don't know your backgrounds, and I'm not making presumptions of your integrity or your education level or anything else. But I personally can speak on my own behalf. I'm one of the largest private taxpayers in this town. I own businesses in this town, I live in this town. If you lay a maximum increase, as though you're speaking of, on this town, you will stunt the growth that you don't even have yet. You don't have growth, you have decline. General principles of business. If you own a retail store and you can't sell your. If you own a retail store and you can't sell your product, do you think if you raise the price, it's going to help your sales? No, but that's exactly what you're talking about doing.
No, it's not.
I am personally not interested in shutting our doors to this city. Because if you lay that kind of increase out, that's what you're doing. And I'm telling you, I'm not an analyst, I'm not a forecaster, I'm a businessman. I spend my dollars here. I sign the front side of the check. If I spend a half a million dollars here, it's my money, not my employer's money. So if you guys can't grasp that all businesses look at tax base, all businesses look at tax stability for the future, then something's wrong. If you think you're going to, you talk, all I've heard is nobody ever spoke of. Here you go. If you think you're going to redesign this economic development authority and you're going to go out and gain all these businesses, it's not going to happen. If you burden those businesses with the tax they can't bear when they can simply go three miles away to another municipality and run their business for half the overhead yearly. This is simple economics. We're not on an island. You can't just do what you want to do if everybody has to go along with it because they have nowhere else to go. They ain't going to Atlin, they ain't going to Bristol, Tennessee, they ain't going to John City, Kingsport, and still have the same economic impact that they have with us. The same interstate system, the same airport, all the things that draw business to our community. You're going to price yourself out of the market. That was an inspirational speech you just gave, but it was foolish.
What I just said was there are way, there's a way to get there, and I'm not talking about it, we're not hearing each other. There's a way to get there in these scenarios without raising the tax base. And we're not getting there yet, and people aren't seeing it. I'm saying there's a way to get there. It's not going to be easy, but there's a way to get there without increasing anybody's taxes. Because there's things that, there's things that, hang on a second, there's things that you don't know that's in play right now, that we know that will make a difference in these scenarios. And if those play out right now, it means no tax increases.
Yeah, yeah, they play out. Those are the.
That should get that, man.
All right.
Listen, I don't want it to get out.
Order.
I don't want it to get out of here.
Right. So what we're saying, we don't want to increase taxes at all. We don't want to, we don't want to push the economic growth of these businesses down. But we can't, we can't push the debt load out for decades either.
You can't worry about ten years if you don't make it ten years.
You want to worry about your future, your families and children and so forth. That's the problem. Everybody wants to, okay, you're a wonderful business person, I get that. You've got sixty properties, you don't want to pay more taxes, okay? I mean, let's, let's, let me, can I, can I please say this to you? The bottom line is, we can sit up here, I'm all for not doing anything. I have no children, I don't care. But you know what? If you've got a young child.
And I want to tell you this, Mr. Flaner. No, no, you talk about kids.
Guys, this is not where I want this to go. Okay, let me make everybody understand, that is not where this is going. I asked that you guys calm down, I didn't come, I came here to let you know how Bart feels, okay? And what I'm trying to express to you is, unless this unknown scenario is a hundred and forty-five or fifty million dollars, it's just like, what you're talking about is short term. Throwing a bucket of water in the lake and thinking the water level's going to come up. We have got to project a better image of our future for this city. If you expect there to be a city. I've been to four of these meetings now, and it's negative this, everybody behind us was stupid, everything's awful. I get it, everybody gets it, we all know those things. So when are we going to look at everybody and say, okay, boys, we've made the turn? We're a new crew. The wind is at the sail, and we're going forward. But it's always the reverse of that. And when people want to come here, whether they want to live here, whether they want to bring their business here, whether they want to do tourism here, and they get on, and they Google Bristol, Virginia, you know what they see? We got to put the sail going this way. We got to let everybody know we're open for business. We already know everybody that did all this was foolish, we get it. We don't have to talk about it every council meeting. We don't have to do this all the time, we don't have to be a coster behind the pass.
I understand. Get your message, I understand. Get your message. All right.
No, I'm, I'm going to finish my comment because you keep talking about children.
I'm talking about the future.
You're talking, no, you keep saying children. I don't want to look at my kids and my kids' friends, my neighbors, the friends they go to school with, and ten years from now, why couldn't you get a decent education? Because we didn't have any money to fund the schools because we put it all to debt. Why did you, why did you have to move out of town? Because the business you work for had to move because they couldn't afford the taxes. Why couldn't you get adequate police and fire protection? Because we took all of our money and put it in one little basket, and guess what? Twenty-five years from now, things are going to be great. We got to live, you know, we got to live in the short run. And you talk about kids, that's who, that's who it's going to hurt, Doug, it's going to hurt the kids.
Well, if they have all this debt on them when they get out and have the best education in the world, and we don't try to get that under control, there's got to be a, there's got to be a compromise scenario.
I think you keep talking about kicking the can, kicking the can. We're do, we're at least being proactive. If we were truly kicking the can and truly as bad as every other council up here, we wouldn't be having this discussion for two more years until it was, our back was against the wall. We're sitting here trying to figure out what to do and trying to do it in the most responsible way to do it, still keep the, that it benefits the employees and the citizens and provide services. And to sit here and say it's putting a burden on the kids, it's, it is. But guess what? If you take that burden off, you're going to put an even bigger burden on them by denying them the services they need through education and all these other things.
It's be a town.
Even if you go with scenario four, which you want to go with, that increases the debt load of this city year to year by fifty percent. Everybody gets that, right?
Can you go back to the slide that put up the, the payments? I think it was one F or F something? No, that one right there. Right there is one, two, three, and four. The least impact on this city is the yellow line, which stretches us out to twenty twenty-three before we're even paying what three, scenario three would require from us. It buys us from seventeen, where we're at right now, to twenty twenty-four before it pops over the line on scenario three. That is the least aggressive and least impact on this city. Yes, in the long run, we'll have to pay a little bit more, but it is, in my mind, our best method out of this mess. It buys us more time, and at the end, we may have to pay a little bit more, but we're not destroying the city in the process. We can keep the doors open, keep the sign on, and keep functioning as a city. And no, sir, we are not going back to a town.
Don't tell me what, we don't know what's going to happen.
If there is any way possible, and I have any say-so about it, we are not going to be a town. We are going to keep our city status, we're going to keep our fire department, we're going to keep our police, and we're going to keep pushing along. The party days are over, but we're in this mess, and we got to get out of it. And we don't need to blow everybody's mind in this city wondering if they got a job tomorrow. Because if we go with scenario one and two, there could be layoffs every year for the next ten years, and you can't stand there and say that that ain't a possibility because it is more likely to happen.
It's a distinct possibility.
It is a distinct possibility. We need to settle this once and for all, and everybody take a deep breath and know where we're at and know what we've got to do to get there. And scenario four is our best option to get us where we need to be. And you can, you can get your people to get three votes, but I will not go for anything other than option four as it sits. So if you can talk one or two more people into options, then you go for it, but I'm not there.
We can sit, we can sit here and let the forty million dollar bill show up.
No, we won't neither because there's an election coming.
Because that, that scenario four also requires the revenue debt service to go from four million to six million to six million to almost seven. And if you think sitting here, you're not going to have to increase taxes and make major cuts, you're kidding yourself.
No, there is cuts on every scenario, there is no way around this without.
Well, I don't, I want the context to make sure everybody understands.
There is no way around this, Bristol, without cuts. There will people, there will be jobs lost, there will be taxes increased, but this is the least impact on the city. And once we do this, we can all take a deep breath and know where we're at and what we've got to do. And we will survive.
I do agree with you, though. I think the children, the education is crucial for the children and so forth. And I don't see it from that perspective, I see it from a long-range debt perspective. But you're a parent, and I understand where you're coming from on that, I just want you to understand, I do.
I don't think four would require a tax increase.
Four won't.
Well, but, but the thing with four, you, like you say, tax increase and cuts, that's where these unknowns that we don't know come up and pop up. You probably would have to use, do that to take care of things along the way. I mean, but I think to Mr. Wingard's point, and that, again, we're being proactive, we're setting out now and saying, yes, it may be stretched out for a longer period of time, but at least we now know what the debt, what the debt is and what the obligation we have to meet is. Right now, the problem is there's forty-one million dollars hanging out in two years that we have to figure out what to do with. Once we get beyond that, and the thing with this, all of these scenarios, it's not like the two thousand fourteen finance. We're not just pushing interest right now and pushing the principal. We are paying principal on all this. So we are, it may be slower, but we're chipping away at that debt. It, either any of these scenarios, as we heard tonight, it's going to take fifteen years probably to get to a comfortable level. But in the meantime, like I say, I can think of at least a dozen different things that, and out of those, some of them, it's not if, it's a matter of when, that those costs are going to come along. And we won't have any other recourse if we take some of those other scenarios.
So if we do get some resources in and we set that money aside.
Then we can always make a balloon payment at the end of the year. If we get to the end of the year and we got ten million, fifteen million in our check account, we can send a five million dollar check.
All right, for right, I'll give you, right now, we're setting aside money into the unassigned fund balance. When we get it to where it needs to be, we set aside money into a rainy day fund in case something like an animal shelter pops up and it's like, oh, we didn't budget for that. All right, we got the money, it's covered, you know. But then, once you get that there, then you still got that line item that was going to unassigned fund balance, now it's going to rainy day fund. And then you say additional debt payment. So you can start putting that over there. Because, again, hopefully the city grows. So at some point, we're going to need to go back, and even if we had the unassigned fund balance and the reserve buildup, you'd want it to be a certain percentage of your budget, so you, you'd hope it would grow. So at some point, you'd have to put more money back in there. So you see, is it at the right level? And if it is, and you've got extra cash, you could take that and pay towards the debt.
But if we have this money, supposedly money that may come to us, and we set that aside, you talk about emergencies, that could be used for emergencies if it's enough money potentially. I mean, we're not talking, you know, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, well, and that's what, that's why, to me, four, I don't see any other option because right now, we're not at that point. Now, that would make it easier, but, you know, we're, we're not there yet. And, and again, that, that's another one of these things, assuming everything works out just exactly like it is, we got to go with what is before us right now. You know, things could change in six months, change in a year, change for better, change for worse.
Even scenario four, we got to come with a million dollars in two years, right? And then, and then a million five, and then two point one. So that's a ten cent real estate tax increase, or it's a five hundred thousand dollar cut in expenditures and a nickel increase.
Not if we can grow the city.
It can be done, in two years.
Okay, every scenario, I'm saying, there's a big if, if the city grows. You still have a shortfall, even in scenario four, a significant shortfall.
I understand that, but Mr. Moonpower, I'm going to ask you, which one of those scenarios has the least devastating impact on this city? Which one?
Depends on the time period you're talking about. If you're talking about this year, or are you talking about over a ten-year time period?
Through the life of this disaster. Through the life of it, from today to the end, which one has the least devastating impact on this city?
Well, obviously, the lowest payment is scenario four.
Scenario four, thank you.
Is the lowest payment.
Thank you.
Right? But the lowest payment is not necessarily the right approach. When you go out and buy a home, you don't necessarily go and get a balloon payment or AMR just to get your loan payment or your, your house payment down as the lowest level you can and you finance it for forty years.
But we're not, but, but scenario four, those payments are leveled for thirty years. That would be like getting a thirty-year fixed, and what we're talking about is maybe you pay a little bit extra, but at least you know. But you know what your payment is, and, and so, right now, what we're talking about is going out and, we might could get a fifteen-year mortgage. If we get a raise and, well, we don't really need to eat or do anything else, we're going to take every bit of available cash. So, you know, why would you not go for, for what is known that's the lower payment that gives you the flexibility? And if you find at the end of the year, you come out a little bit ahead, you could pay towards the debt early. I mean, to me, that, that makes more sense.
Well, counsel, let me kind of rein this back in here real quick. We've discussed scenarios one through four. Mr. Wingard is of the opinion that scenario four is the least impactful to the city. I agree with that to a degree, and I also say that scenario three has very little impact to the city. At the end of the day, if you want to look at the least payment, scenario three is an eight point one million dollar payment. Scenario four, once we get fully ramped up, is an eight point five million dollar payment. Over the course of the twenty-five years that this will be financed, scenario four is going to cost the city two hundred and three million dollars. Scenario three will cost the city a hundred and ninety-nine million dollars. And scenario two is going to cost the city roughly a hundred and eighty-seven million dollars. And scenario one is a hundred and seventy-seven million dollars. So there's different ways to look at what's the least impactful on the city. Now, if you want to talk daily operations, scenario three or four is going to be the least impactful on the city. If you want to talk long-term financial forecasts, scenario one's going to be the least impactful on the city. At the end of the day, we've got to make a decision relatively soon on how we want to move forward. And we're going to have to make that decision within the next two weeks. I met with Davenport today by phone and also in person. And really, we need to start moving forward at the next council meeting on November fourteenth to let them know which way we're going. And I'll be honest with you and open as I always am, they want a phone call from me tomorrow to let them know how this council meeting went tonight and which way I think council is going to lean towards. And I'll be honest with you, and I'll look at every one of you in the eye, it appears that it's leaning towards three or four. Now, and that's what I'm going to tell them. I'm also going to have them run us an analysis on a combination of two and three, just to see if that changes things to a degree that it's such a material change that we would need to discuss that within the next two weeks. And if it's a material change, I'll bring it back. And even if it's an immaterial change, I'm going to let you know what that change has been. So unless I hear otherwise, it appears from outside looking in, three and four are, is what council is leaning towards, and this train is slowly moving away from the station. If not, if we don't make a decision now, we're going to be looking at this the same time next year because our entire payment structure and everything that we've done to this point will be null and void due to the fact of the refunding that we get by refinancing it prior to January. And that's where we stand right now.
Yeah, I think the Fed's announced a rate increase in December. Let me know going to what they say they want to or planning to. So that will impact the interest that we would get on anything after that date. My numbers that I run, three and four don't require a tax increase unless the bottom falls out. I mean, I, we've used extra cautionary revenues, and it requires very little money from the falls. So I mean, if the falls should blossom, we got extra money. As they say, write a check every year and throw it into the bond payment. So that takes the pressure off of whatever option we end up with. But I think we can do three or four without a tax increase, the property tax that is. And so.
I think if we're smart moving forward.
It costs the most money in the long run because you suck purchasing power out of the city's. It costs the most money in the long run, cause you suck purchasing power out of the city's, uh, budget. So that it's gonna force, it's gonna keep pressure on tax increases. But the beauty of it is it'd be gradual rather than jumping at it all at once.
If we're smart moving forward, three and four will be the easiest on the city.
Well, and on the people.
On the, that's what.
The whole, yeah, you mean the city, okay.
Okay, anything else?
Unless you have any questions.
All right, I think there was one person signed up for B through G, Michael Pollard.
Uh, I think most of my, 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 thank you.
All right, on to the regular agenda item. Uh, number one, public, uh.
Two hours, ten minutes, and we just gonna take about four times.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo, members of council. Uh, my name is Bart Poe. I live in Washington County. Um, sorry. Um, but I was gonna speak a little bit on the IDA. And, um, what I was really gonna say is, um, the IDA, most of the members on the IDA, five out of seven members were voted in by this council. And there was a vetting process. Um, and I think you all did a good job. And, and I wanna take a little bit of responsibility for maybe the, the IDA not moving as far along as, as what it should have. Um, mainly because when, um, when I started in as the IDA executive director, it was a temporary position. Um, you know, I was told, okay, can you do this for a few months till we find somebody to replace you? And I said, yeah. And the only reason I agreed to that was just to kinda hold everything together because, uh, the staff, the, the community development staff is just fantastic. Uh, one of the, the things that I think there's been a misunderstanding about is there is a big difference between economic development and community development. My predecessor, Andrew Trivett, um, not only had the title of community development director and economic development director, but also assistant city manager. And in that role, he had the ability to pull in other people, other departments, and pretty much had free rein of being able to use employees as he saw fit for economic development. So there got to be a really fuzzy line between community and economic development. Community development, uh, as you know, Ellen Tolton, CDGB coordinator, our planner. Um, we have residential inspections and a building official and code enforcement, which we don't have anymore. So that was kind of the, the group. So when, when we started with the IDA executive director and I was asked to come on for a few months, it, it kept kind of going on and going on and going on. Every few months, I actually went to the IDA, and Ms. Oxendine can verify this. I told them that I didn't want to do it. I said, I didn't want, I didn't like the direction it was going. I didn't like how it was structured. And, um, I thought it was really not paying attention to two, uh, two areas which I thought were very important. That's business retention and business expansion. You know, we talk a lot about bringing new businesses in, but we've got a lot of good jobs here already. And I will say that community development has put together the business retention tours, and several of you all have attended those. And I think that's really great for our community, and I think it's really great, you know, for the IDA. So I haven't pushed the IDA as far forward as, as I should have as executive director. Um, so I think if anybody has been holding the IDA back, it's been my fault. But, um, I like the idea of a restructuring, um, a full replacement. I, I would, I would suggest you give the IDA members that you have elected and that you have appointed, um, a chance to do, I guess, what they can really do. And, um, as far as the name change, you know, that, that's, that's something that's been done across the Commonwealth just to make it easier to understand. I mean, because the IDA does so much more than industrial development. You know, we, like I said, we're in business retention, business expansion, do a lot of things. And, um, and I think we're just now with, uh, with our new consultant onboard, getting a foothold and really pushing forward for a strategy and, and a direction. And it's probably something that we've not done before. And it's just because we've kinda played this waiting game. So, um, that's what I wanna say for the IDA. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Poe, by the way, Ms. Reed says you're a very, very valuable employee. He's told me that on many occasions, and, and he, he said that. Well, no, he's, he, he doesn't pass out praise much, really doesn't. But he, he said that, and I want you to know that, how much he thinks of you and how valued you are to the city.
All right, moving on to the regular agenda, got a, a proposal here to move item seven, the executive session, up to the first item of the regular agenda since we're running late. We got guests, uh, here to be part of that. So it's a pleasure, council, need a motion to do that?
Move to move executive session up.
Second.
All right, please call the roll.
Fleener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, item number one, now executive session pursuant to two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A five, Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended, discussion concerning prospective business or industry on the expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement's been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community in prospective business. And pursuant to two dash two thirty-seven eleven A eight, Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended, consultation with legal counsel employed and retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, legal matters.
Counsel, I'd also ask that Mr. Poe be allowed in on the business portion of the executive session.
So if it's a pleasure, council, need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session for the reasons stated.
Second.
Have a motion second. Please call the roll.
Fleener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Okay, now that Mr. Hartley's back, we can, uh, get moving again?
I appreciate that.
All right, my roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Please call the roll.
Fleener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, moving on to regular agenda item number one. Public hearing regarding resolution requesting that Virginia Department of Transportation establish a bicycle pedestrian safety program project, staff report.
Y'all can hear me.
Yeah.
Uh, staff has advertised and is holding a public meeting in order to see comments regarding an application for the bicycle and pedestrian safety program grant through VDOT's Highway Safety Improvement Program. Staff will be requesting approximately one point nine million from VDOT to construct sidewalks in several different areas of the city, many benefiting our city schools and low-income residential areas. There is no match required from the city for this grant.
I like that.
Adding sidewalks will increase pedestrian safety within the city limits, particularly those of our children walking to and from school. This application is aligned with objective number four of the city's transportation and mobility plan in its twenty seventeen comprehensive plan. Wallace will now share the preliminary project scope for the location of these sidewalks in targeted areas.
We've got, we're basically breaking that down into five different projects. Um, one, one of them is the, if you can see over there, um, the Highlands. Highland D School up in here, uh, along Rhode Island. We, we're, we're gonna run sidewalk down through here. I'm sorry. We're gonna run the sidewalk down Rhode Island and then down the side street, um, out to Kingsmill Pike to tie into the sidewalk that's existing right here. That, that one's a, that project is approximately, sorry, two point four, two, two hundred and forty thousand. Uh, the next one is, the next slide, we feel like we really need a sidewalk down Kingsmill Pike.
Yeah, yes.
And so, so, I'm sorry.
There you go.
There we go.
It's gonna be killed.
Um, and so we wanna kick, pick it up from where the sidewalk ends and carry it out Kingsmill Pike to Valley Drive, East Valley, and then turn it down in front of the Dollar General. That one's gonna be, I think that's a real necessary one because of that neighborhood. Going to shop at the store there. Uh, we're gonna probably have to buy some property in there, which this, this grant funding doesn't take care of. But the CDVG funding will allow us to purchase some of that property if we need to, to widen for the sidewalk. And so there's, there's full funding on that one. It'll come from two different sources.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is it, is, I think on the other slide, slide you showed, uh, the sidewalk and, uh, the curb and gutter. Does, does King Mill Pike, are you gonna have the stormwater, or is it just? Cause I know that, that creek down through there, there's been in the past problems of flooding and stuff through there.
Will, on, on Kingsmill Pike, we'll put curb and gutter along the side of the road where we have the sidewalk to kinda add an additional level of protection to people and that they'll have the curb to protect them from cars. But it doesn't address some of that flooding down in there. That would be another.
Or is that something maybe CDGB, while you're doing the work, that you could use CDGB funds for?
To fix that flooding, I've thought about it some. There, we have, if you look at that map, right across from the, uh, in that area.
Yeah.
Where we have that storm area. There's, there's some things that we could do with that that might give some more volume. But that's a different project, but I think that's something that we ought, I'd like to try to look at.
Capacity for water, cause I've, I've, all kinds of rain. It gets muddy, but it never see a rise.
Well, and, and I'm thinking more back towards that intersection near McKinley and Dunlap. I mean, if you look at the creek bed, it's concreted right there behind, uh, where that, uh, laundromat used to be in the store.
Yeah.
And, and just, you know, that right there, you've got all the water that flows through and it channels it into a low spot in the road where you've got five roads more or less in a hundred foot converging, and, and it can potentially be an issue.
One of the things that we can do, though, is if we can, if we can get some money and modify that pond, we can reduce the flow downstream so that it's not overtaxed as it is now. But that's, that's another project.
Okay, well, I didn't know if that would.
It, there, there's not a way to fund that under this. And it, and there's not, what we're doing is just in the road. And to improve that drainage, we would have to do a little something different. But that's one thing I do wanna address and I have looked at.
Okay.
Um, and the next one, um, and we'll talk about this in a little bit. We got some other funding to do a shared use path along Bonham Road that VDOT called us about. There'll be another resolution in a little bit about that. But we didn't have enough to carry it all the way through. But what we wanna try to do is take that shared use path down Sunset, up through this Van Pelt Park or whatever it's called there, up to the elementary school. And so that'll be a ten-foot wide asphalt path that'll connect out to Lee Highway. And if you'll, if you remember, we've already got a, um, a shared use path from, um, Sugar Hollow Park to Old Airport Road. The next phase of Lee Highway that we're gonna work on is also gonna have a shared use path from Blevins down to, um, Alexis. And then that section in between, we'll make that all, all connect. This road, this, this will be able to connect out to Bonham, down Paulina, and up to Alexis. So that'll connect all the way out to the falls. Again, one of the things that we're trying to get with these sidewalk projects is we're trying to interconnect more areas of the city so that people can go further in them. Long-term, we wanna run a shared use path all the way down Lee Highway to Valley and up to the high school, possibly out East Valley. But that's, that's long-term. And so there's this piece that we'd like to get funded. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, then we've got this piece. We're, this is one that we're gonna reduce because the, the, the overall cost of this section here uh, was, was close to a million dollars, a little over a million dollars. And so I'm gonna reduce it so that it goes from here down to here and out. And then we'll try to catch the other at another time when we go for funding. Um, the last one, we didn't get a sketch done. But from, from Valley Drive up Lee Highway towards, um, the pizza place and towards, uh, Euclid Avenue. Especially as you come up, um, from Valley Drive on Lee Highway, you see people walking down through there. It's not really a safe place to go. So we're gonna try to figure out how to get a sidewalk through that section and tie it in back at Euclid where we've got the other piece out there.
So would that be on the southbound?
It would be on the south side of the road.
That's where you got the most room.
Yeah, and it, there's one.
The other side is all property owners and, and rock.
Yeah, well, it's rock. There's one section where between the church and the place on the other side of the street, or right there in front of that church, there's some rock. But we may have to narrow the road to try to fit a sidewalk in there. But again, we try to put curb and gutter, get sidewalk raised up slightly so that they're a little more protected. And then we'd be able to get people down through there. Um, but that's just kind of an overview of what we're trying to go after. We may not get all of it. We may get pieces of it. But I'm, I'm gonna shoot for first is the, um, uh, Kingsmill Pike piece. And then the, the, since we're already getting funding on Bonham Road to get the piece up to Van Pelt. Those are the two primary ones, and if we get the others, that's great. But again, this is hundred percent financing. Uh, it's, it's money that a lot of people don't take advantage of according to VDOT, and so we're trying to get that.
Okay. Wow, we can use all the sidewalks we can get.
Absolutely.
Really, we had a few.
That was like a real city.
Yes.
We had a few people, uh, signed up for this, uh. Uh, Jack Johnson, you're first on the list. Did he leave? Okay. Um, Charles Moore?
He left.
Two. Michael Pollard?
Uh, my name is Michael Pollard. I live at one oh one Ashley Drive. Uh, as I'm sure a number of people are aware, I am very excited towards this prospect because I have all four walkability in the city. Um, the area of King Mill Pike would be a, will be a very useful area, especially once that can be extended up to cover some of the areas north of there. Uh, I, I see the extreme usefulness of the area that's currently planned. And I'm looking forward to that being extended further north as well. Uh, and the Suncrest area, being able to connect through to Walmart. So that's all walkable, so that people can walk from the neighborhoods to do their shopping without needing to drive. Uh, I'm very excited to see that happen. Um, one thing that I would like to, uh, ask for perhaps some concern concerning the technicalities of the resolution, though, unless the state requires it to be worded this way. Uh, the resolution includes, or for one thing, just be, to be aware of, that yes, the initial funding may be entirely state-funded, but the resolution specifies that the city of Bristol will be responsible for maintenance and operating costs of any improvements. So it's not, there's no free lunch, if you will. Uh, even if the lunch is free, we may have to pay the tip. Um, and also, it also specifies that if the city elects to cancel the project, which I don't expect that would happen, but it is part of the resolution, that the city agrees to reimburse, uh, VDOT for the total amount of costs expended uh, through the date of notify, of notifying such cancellation. And that doesn't have any exception for things that are approved by the state. It says that we will reimburse them for everything. Uh, so unless the state requires that wording, um, personally, I prefer that if the state agrees to pay for something, that we let the state pay for something rather than us agreeing to reimburse them. Anyway, it's just.
That's if we stop the program.
Right, and if we stop it partway, it's just.
Well, I mean, technically, we could stay in the program till every place in the city has a sidewalk. Then we quit, and they say, oh, you quit, you're gonna have to pay us for all of it.
Exactly. That's, that's the kinda things that I'm concerned about.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, Norris Lunsford?
He left.
Okay. And Nancy, you didn't sign up, so you gonna put your name down here? How do you spell it? Uh, come on up.
Gentlemen, my name is Nancy Marty. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. Uh, two things. Number one, it is K-I-N-G Pike, King Mill. There's no S.
There is an S. Kingsmill.
Not on the old maps, there's no S.
There is an S.
There is an S.
There is not an S.
Yes.
I'll get, I'll get my map out and then we'll argue over that. Now, a number of years back, probably at least 30, probably 25 to 30 years back, the city was a perennial member of the six-year club with VDOT, and that was for the purpose of taking out the curves in the King Mill Pike. They haven't been taken out yet, I might add. Now, the reason I brought this up was because I'd hate for you all to put all those sidewalks in there and then all of a sudden decide you really were gonna straighten out the road. Maybe that's been given up, but the city applied for that years ago, it may have been 30 years ago, to take, to remove all of those curves in the King Mill Pike, particularly there around the church and back toward Valley Pike. You know, that's horrible and Lord have mercy, before the city finally got smart and put the guardrail there, there were cars routinely sliding off the road in bad snow or rain into somebody's yard or somebody's front porch on one of those curves.
Yeah, I think all those developments that they've put in since that pretty well eliminated the possibility of straightening that road.
Well, they'd have to take it off the other side, but I, they, it had all been worked out, and we were on the six-year plan. I know this, Dick Horner, well, he's dead now, but he was one of the guiding lights in this, and I think Bob McNutt was. But those are safe statements, because they're both dead.
Yeah.
But anyway. I know what I'm doing. But, no, but they had it worked out, they being the City of Bristol, Virginia, had it worked out. And we were on the list and we would get almost up to the first or second on the six-year list and then decide to use the money from VDOT for something else. And it was all the something elsees that kept us from straightening that King Mill Pike. So I just, I brought that up because I didn't know whether that was still even thought about, but I'd hate for you to put the sidewalks in and then dig it all up and straighten the road. That's all I had, huh?
Initially, they're not gonna go that far anyway.
Yeah.
That curve is gonna be something in the future.
I was gonna say, plus VDOT has changed their funding formula.
They may have changed their list and all that, but we were on that list for it. Dick Gordon was, Dick isn't dead, but Dick was on one of the councils when that was done. So it goes back a while, but they'd get almost to number one and then decide, no, to do something else. Okay.
Time's up.
You want that other ankle broken?
Map. If you type in King Mill, you will find it on MapQuest. If you type in Kings Mill, you will not find Kings Mill.
Then our signs are wrong.
Yeah.
MapQuest calls it King Mill. All right. So that's all the public comments that signed up. So next thing is number two, consider resolution requesting VDOT establish a bicycle pedestrian safety program project. City manager will read resolution.
Resolution requesting Virginia Department of Transportation establish a bicycle and pedestrian safety program, BPSB project. Whereas, in accordance with Commonwealth Transportation Board construction allocation procedures, it is necessary that a resolution be received from the sponsoring jurisdiction or agency requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation establish a bicycle and pedestrian safety program project through the Highway Safety Improvement Program to be administered by the City of Bristol, Virginia. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Bristol requests the Commonwealth Transportation Board to establish a project for the Bristol and pedestrian safety program. Be it further resolved that the City of Bristol hereby commits to provide any additional funds necessary to complete the project. Be it further resolved that the City of Bristol hereby agrees to enter into a project administration agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation and provide the necessary oversight to ensure the project is developed in accordance with all state and federal requirements for design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction of a federally funded transportation project. Be it further resolved that the City of Bristol will be responsible for maintenance and operating costs of any improvement facility constructed with the Highway Safety Improvement Program funds unless other arrangements have been made with the department. Be it further resolved that if the City of Bristol subsequently elects to cancel this project, the City of Bristol hereby agrees to reimburse the Virginia Department of Transportation for the total amount of costs expended by the department through the date the department is notified of such cancellation. The City of Bristol also agrees to repay any funds previously reimbursed that are later deemed ineligible by the Federal Highway Administration. Be it further resolved that the City of Bristol's council hereby grants authority for the city manager to execute project agreements for any approved Highway Safety Improvement Program projects for fiscal year 2019, adopted by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia at a regularly scheduled meeting of said council held on the 24th day of October 2017.
By project, are they speaking specifically of this one deal as the project, or is it the ongoing program?
It would be however many projects we break it up.
All right, so this is a standalone project?
Well, this, this one that we're going for is, is probably gonna be like five projects.
Right, but I meant, if we do project one, we don't pull out, then we go to two. If we do all five, in other words, and then over five years from now, we get some more project money, in other words, does each project stand on its own?
Yes.
So if we can quit on a project one and we owe them everything, they spend on one. Okay.
And my question is, we lay out where we want the sidewalks. VDOT does not have a say in that. So if we don't, if we can't capture that property on King Mill Pike, we can, because we have, you said we had to buy some land to do that, some right-of-way. So if we don't have the money to move forward in that section, we can move that side, that footage of sidewalk somewhere else?
Sure.
Okay.
We got plenty of places we could put it. That would be the stick that we'd use with the public. You want sidewalks, let us have your land.
Okay, based on the reading resolution, do, what's council's pleasure?
Move to accept.
I second that.
Motion sec, uh, second by Mr. Wingard. Clerk call the roll.
Flener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. All right, number three, consider joint resolution regarding makeup of the Highlands Community Services Board.
It's just a yearly thing.
Counsel, we had an individual from Highlands Community Services here. I can kind of give you a quick update as to what that entails. I don't know if you wanna.
They, they just have to do it every year. It's a state requirement. There's, it's boilerplate from the standpoint of.
But if you want someone here, I mean, if you'll allow me, I'll go ahead and read the resolution unless there's any questions.
Go ahead and go to the resolution.
A joint resolution regarding the Highlands Community Services Board, whereas Chapter Five Community Service Boards of Title 37.2 Mental Health, Mental Retardation and Substance Abuse Services of the 1950 Code of Virginia as amended provides for the establishment of community service boards for the purpose of establishing, maintaining, and promoting the development of mental health, developmental, and substance abuse services in the cities and counties of the Commonwealth. And whereas, the City of Bristol, Virginia, and Washington County, Virginia established a joint community service board originally named the Community Mental Health and Mental Retardation Services Board of Washington County and City of Bristol, Virginia, and now known as the Highlands Community Service Board. And whereas, when the board was originally established by joint resolution of the governing bodies, it was composed of 12 members consisting of nine from Washington County and three from the City of Bristol. And whereas, from time to time, the numerical makeup of the board has been changed through amendments to the bylaws of the Highlands Community Services Board. And currently, the local board consists of eight residents of Washington County and five residents of the City of Bristol. And whereas, the State Board of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services for the Commonwealth has requested that local governmental entities that have established joint local community service boards approve by resolution the current makeup of each locality's representation to the local board to the extent that it has been amended from its original makeup. Now therefore be it resolved by City Council for the City of Bristol, Virginia, and the Board of Supervisors of Washington County, Virginia, that Highlands Community Service Board shall consist of eight board members who reside in Washington County, Virginia, and five board members who reside in the City of Bristol, Virginia, for a total board of 13 members.
Move to accept the resolution.
Got a motion by Mr. Flener, second by Mr. Hartley. Please call the roll.
Flener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. Okay, number four, consider performance contract for Highlands Community Services.
Counsel, I'll be honest, I do not have probably the necessary information. I think probably need someone from Highlands to move.
You wanna table this?
I would suggest table on that.
Move to table.
Okay, move to table by Mr. Flener.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wingard. Call the roll.
Flener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Those yeses are getting kinda tired, guys. I'm gonna tell you that right now.
Running low on time. I only got a couple.
Number five, consider, uh, number five, consider second reading and adoption of an ordinance granting exception from real estate property taxes. Staff report.
Counsel, that's the previous ordinance that we read at the last meeting in regards to the Church of the Nazarene, and if I can find it.
Any public comment?
No one signed up for that.
Okay. I move that we go ahead and adopt the ordinance, the reading of it by caption only.
Yeah, thank you. That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
I got a motion by Mr. Hubbard and a second by Mr. Flener. Please call the roll.
Flener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. All right. Pleasure, counsel, to move to approve the consent agenda as written with the exception of.
We gotta do a reading by caption only.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you find the caption?
Read the headline.
The ordinance, ordinance granting exemption from real property taxation for Sinning Park Church of the Nazarene. Whereas, the Sinning Park Church of the Nazarene has requested that the City Council for the City of Bristol, Virginia.
Caption only.
Yeah, caption only. Oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance granting exemption from real property taxation for Sinning Park Church of the Nazarene.
A move that we adopt.
Second.
Second on Mr. Hartley, or most members of Hartley, second by Mr. Hubbard. Call the roll.
Flener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. Now we can move to the consent agenda.
VDOT.
Uh, no.
Resolution.
Oh, the capital, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. We moved the capital project out of the consent agenda to number six. That's the VDOT resolution for the capital project.
The 660.
I think there is a resolution.
Is the person not here?
I've got it right here.
Okay, caption only?
No, do that second time.
You only play that card once.
Move that we read the resolution.
Mr. McCollough, if you'd just go ahead with item six on that capital project, the one that was moved out today.
Oh, we're gonna have a report.
This is, this is another one of the sidewalk projects. VDOT called two months ago or so and said they had $660,000 that they wanted to, if we could find a way to spend it. It, there was a two percent.
You looked long and hard.
For that money. And so what we decided to do was to, on Bonham Road, to extend the, the shared use path from Paulina Drive, which is just north of Food City, up to Sunset Drive, where we're gonna continue it on the other one. But that one requires shifting pavement over, which, because of the hillside in front of Food City, we're, we're having to shift it over some. We're gonna have to take up some pavement, put in curb and gutter, probably add some storm drains, so it was a little more expensive, and we could only do a short section of it. At any rate, we've got the money to do that, and that's what we're asking for you to, I guess, to vote on there. The two percent funding that we have to provide, we can, we can provide that from, from the general fund based on like my salary and Chuck's salary when we do the design, or Michael Main's crews doing some of the work. We, in-kind work, basically, is what we'll do to, to fund that, that two percent. And that's, it's like 13,000. It's not a lot of money. So we felt like we could come up with it. We felt like it was a good justification for that. So that's it. You got any questions?
What, what would the professional, if you're doing all this in-house, what's the line item for professional services?
We may have to get some geotechnical work. I know, well, part of that's under, the geotechnical work is, I guess, is the only part under professional services that we'd really have to hire. We'll, we'll get a consultant to help during construction for some of the monitoring of construction like we're doing on Lee Highway.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, so what's the pleasure, counsel?
Move to adopt the plan as presented.
It's a resolution.
That is a resolution we have? Okay, move, reading of the resolution.
A resolution for, a resolution for the Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia as an endorsement of the construction of a shared use path and pavement overlay on Bonham Road and sidewalk on Suncrest Drive, Project U-000-102-752, parenthesis UPC 112244, close parenthesis. Whereas, in accordance with the Commonwealth Transportation Board Construction Allocation Procedures, it is necessary that a resolution be received from the sponsoring local jurisdiction or agency requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT, to establish a project in the City of Bristol. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Bristol requests the Commonwealth Transportation Board to establish a project for the construction of a shared use path and pavement overlay on Bonham Road and sidewalk on Suncrest Drive. Be it further resolved that the City of Bristol hereby agrees to provide its share of the total cost for preliminary engineering, right-of-way, and construction of this project in accordance with the project financial documents. Be it further resolved that the City of Bristol hereby agrees to enter into a project administration agreement with VDOT and provide the necessary oversight to ensure the project is developed in accordance with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements for design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction of the project. Be it further resolved that the City of Bristol will be responsible for maintenance and operating costs of the facility as constructed unless other arrangements have been made with VDOT. Be it further resolved that if the City of Bristol subsequently elects to cancel the project, the City of Bristol hereby agrees to reimburse VDOT for the total amount of costs expended by VDOT through the date VDOT is notified of such cancellation. The City of Bristol also agrees to repay any funds previously reimbursed that are later deemed ineligible by the Federal Highway Administration or VDOT. Be it further resolved that this Council of the City of Bristol hereby grants authority for the city manager to apply for funds and execute project administration agreements as well as other documents necessary for approved projects.
All right. I have a council motion, second to adopt the resolution.
Move that we adopt the resolution.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hartley and Mr. Hubbard is the second. Please call the roll.
Flener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. All right, now moving on to consent agenda as, we could prove it as written with the exception of the capital project that was moved out that we just voted on.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to approve, Mr. Hubbard, second by Mr. Flener. Call the roll.
Flener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. All right, members, presented by members of public, no one signed up. See any other comments?
Counsel, I'll just keep it short and sweet. It's been a late night, but it's been a very productive night. I commend you all for the discussions that we had in regards to all the discussions that were brought forth tonight, and in particular, the debt discussion. It's a very important topic that the city needs to have, and commend you all for your comments and the way that it was conducted tonight. The next neighborhood meeting will be on November the 13th. That's the Monday night before our next council meeting, but I will wait to kind of determine the weather to see exactly where we want to have that held. I'm thinking at one of our next meetings, it'd be an outdoor-type facility with hot chocolate and things like that for individuals to come out and have a little bit, a more of a relaxed atmosphere.
And I'll be out of town at night, so I'll, you guys figure out who, who needs to go.
You go do something at West End, you go try to do something at West End. Yeah. I also want to commend our staff. This has been an extremely tough two weeks for everybody involved. I've been pulled away in a lot of different directions dealing with the debt restructuring. People stepped up when they needed to step up, and the city ran efficiently and effectively, and I really appreciate what everybody does to help me make the city run as good as it does run. So I want to say thank you to everybody involved for that. That's all I have.
All right. Counsel's here for adjournment. All right, council's here by adjournment.